On to budget hearings, we recessed yesterday evening about 5:30. So, we're just gonna jump right into it. First up, Animal Control Governing Board Treasurer, if they're here.
I'm trying to get ahold of Ms. Janus now for her to come up here, but I mean, if I can do to help us out on it, Chairman.
Um, I don't have any questions. I think we discussed it a little bit yesterday on doing away with that board and.
Right, yeah. And like I said, I already talked to Commissioner Richardson about it and like I said, I think that would just, for me, and I got Michelle back here with the finance, and I just think, you know, if we could do that, that would put it all in one account and just flow a lot easier for us. She would be in control of it and we would, actually, we'd have a lot better, more of a count of it, everything.
Um, I don't have a problem just leaving the funding the same that's there and we'll discuss at a board meeting on doing away with it and just putting it all under one account.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I would also, just thinking about this overnight, thought about the additional funds that's, that are in their bank, in the account, that have yet to be used. What, I guess when we get in that board meeting and discuss that, we can discuss.
We can't take no action on that or anything in a workshop.
Yeah, right.
For the time being, we'll just go ahead and budget the same amount.
Okay.
No one has a problem with it. And at a regular board meeting, we'll discuss the direction we want to go with that.
Yeah, and just kind of give you heads up, this, Janus, she's, like I said, on the 10th is her last day, and I got two new employees, that's, that's, I've got one, well, they're both hired, and they're, they're taking over now. So, Janus, she's like, a few more days, she's, she's retired. What we've done now is this account that you're talking about, I've given everything to Michelle, and she's gonna, you know, she's gonna be the control of it and have a running account and everything, and we're gonna balance the checkbook and make sure everything's good to go. Since Janus has been taking care of it, we're just gonna have Michelle take over it. So, we're getting all that squared away, and like I say, Janus, she's, she's just on 10th, she's the last day, so she's outta here.
All right. Any questions for the Sheriff?
Yes, sir.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
All right, next up, Ark North Florida.
Good morning, Commissioners, how are you today?
Good morning.
I want to first, well, I'm Beverly Standridge, I'm the Executive Director for the Ark North Florida. I want to thank you all for your continued support for the Ark North Florida. As you know, it's serving citizens within the county that has an intellectual disability. I wanted to share with you that we've started recycling, a cardboard recycling program, and that enables people with disabilities that aren't normally funded to work in our community, so taxpaying and those types of things. We're trying to become more self-reliant. We have ability supply that provides cleaning products and paper supplies, so I just want to let you know, we just, we aren't here for a handout every single time. We really are trying to become more self-reliant. We're asking for the same amount as last year, understanding that the funds that you give us, we are good stewards with those funds, and we actually renovated our group home that houses seven men with disabilities last year, that was built in the 90s.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Any questions for Ms. Beverly?
No, I don't have any.
Well, again, thank you very much, and looking forward to hearing from you.
Um, like I said, A R C's always had a special place for me. My cousin went there up until his death.
Oh.
And we appreciate everything you do.
Oh, thanks.
And I don't see anybody having a problem with your funding.
Don't have any issues with it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, Garden Adlatum. Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Three.
Okay.
Good morning, I'm Lynda Gage, Secret Director with the Garden Adlatum Program, and this is Deborah Dean, our H R Finance Person. And we too, thank Suwannee County for their continued support of our program. I'm sure all of you have the budget that I submitted. It only raised $51.69 a quarter for Suwannee County, and that's due to a rent increase for our building, and that totals like $260 a year increase. The rent increase is really nothing we can have any control over. But as you all know, we advocate for abused children in Suwannee County. Right now, Suwannee County is steadily climbing with children in the system. That's pretty much our request, the same as last year, other than a $206 increase a year.
Which, which tab's that under, Ricky?
The increased amount?
Which tab was that, Ricky?
Four, yeah.
Three.
Three?
Outside agency request.
Oh, okay, all right, never mind.
And we do try very much to keep all the costs down. People that know me know I'm real, you know, about that. Turn out the lights, do this, do that.
Do y'all have any questions?
No.
Yes, sir.
Okay, it's already in the budget.
Yeah, it's not coming off the contingency, it's already budgeted in, it's a statutory requirement.
All right.
We appreciate it. I don't think anybody's got any questions for you.
Nope.
Thank you very much, we appreciate it.
Next up, Historical Commission.
Good morning, for the record, my name is Eric Musgrove, Chairman of the Suwannee County Historical Commission. We thank you for your continued support over the years. The Historical Commission was created in 1980, a joint agreement between the city and the county, established us to promote and preserve what we can of Suwannee County's history, so we've been active since 1980. A few things that we have done over the past year, we've been continuing our oral history project that we've been doing for many years, basically recording some of our older folks, their accomplishments, their lives, histories for future generations. We also have our website still up and running, www.suwannihistory.com. We're posting some of those on, those oral history projects on YouTube, so people can watch them and access them that way. We are continuing the publishing of several brochures about Suwannee County's history for people to come through, either to do walking tours or to drive around and look at. We hold numerous historical presentations over the year, various folks in our group, which I've got several of my members here with me today. We also, one of the presentations we had this year, which was a first for us and a very enjoyable one, was Francis Gary Powers Jr. In April, he was the son of the YouTube pilot that was shot down by the Soviet Union in 1960. He came here in April, we sponsored that, along with some assistance from the Spirit of the Suwannee, Air Law Firm and some others local, helped bring him here, and he did a great job. We had people from hour and a half away driving to hear him. So, we're going to make that an annual commitment, and so we look forward to that. Our application this year is for $6,000, which includes the $3,000 that you agreed to give us for insurance last year. We also, this year, have submitted an application to the state for a historical grant in the amount, $440,000 for roofing repairs for the museum building, which we own. We received about two weeks ago, a notice from the state that they had deemed our application eligible, so in September, they will be reviewing that application along with all the others from across the state to see if we get any money and how much. And we want to thank y'all for your support of that. You agreed to help financially with that support, so we appreciate that. We've also adopted new bylaws this year, helps us run smoother, meetings, those kinds of things, so we're glad to get that done. Took us about a year of reviewing, our bylaws are up and running. We also spent the first half of the year attempting to merge with the, with the Museum Association. As y'all recall, that's been an ongoing issue for several years, and we have not made any more headway with that as of six months ago when we had our last meeting. Because of Amtrak hopefully coming through here, we may be asking for additional funding this coming year. We've got some repairs that need to be done. Our air conditioning units, for instance, came over on the Mayflower, I think, and they're kind of, we're, we're basically repairing them as much as we can, but it's getting to the point where we can't even find parts hardly anymore. So, if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer any that I can.
Any questions for Eric?
I don't have any. I had one, but I forgot it.
You said you did have something?
I had one, but completely can't figure it out what it was.
Well, if it comes back to you, Mr. Pevas.
I have a general comment here. If you recall at budget time last year, we were requesting that the Historical Commission and the Museum Association look at how they could go ahead and merge. And as a result, we didn't do any funding for the Museum Association last year to encourage that joiner. At this particular time, we, back then, you said, you know, you wanted them to attempt to merge, get together. You can see the results haven't come that way, so I would like to propose that, you know, we go ahead with the letter that we need to send to the city to go ahead and, you know, do away with the Museum Association. Under the terms of that, the Museum Association officially would have one year left from the time of the letter. However, if the city also does not want to continue with that, if they both agree, we can, you know, terminate it in a quicker manner. But I think we need to go ahead and provide that notice. Not for today, but just to let you know, it's coming up at the next meeting.
Not a discussion for today, so. Any other questions?
I don't have.
I remember mine, but this, I can ask you later.
All right, thank y'all. Everyone good with the funding staying at $6,000?
Yeah.
Next up, Conservation District. They're, they're budgeted in already, they're not coming out of contingency, right? Yeah.
Good morning.
Morning.
I think everybody knows me, I'm Andy Jackson, Chairman of the Suwannee County Conservation District. This is Joanie Fortner, our, what they call you now? She keeps all this straightforward, yeah. But as some of y'all attend the meetings, y'all know, we've been pretty active the last several years with retrofitting irrigation systems and planting cover crops, helping farmers plant cover crops and stuff. We're trying to improve the quality of life in Suwannee County and keep agriculture alive, too. I think the only increase that I can see in the budget's on the salary side, we didn't ask for anything more, but we let y'all handle the sal, that part of it. But if I had to answer any questions y'all have or anything, I'd be, I'd be glad to.
No, I don't have any, everything looked good. Any questions?
I don't have any questions at all. I think they did a great job with all the money they have to handle and keep up with to provide and help the farmers, so they do a good job.
Put you on the spot, Andy. What are y'all bringing in from outside sources annually now in the Suwannee County as far as through grants for different farmers? Do you know that number?
It's up and down, I'd say average three, four million dollars a year, somewhere in that range.
I know it was up there pretty good.
So, because we know it comes in different sources, we deal with Office of Energy now, we're working with them, but that's under F Dax, but a lot of stuff with F Dax, and then the N R C S programs, they're running around a million and a half, two million dollars a year. And then the F Dax part, the energy part, depends on how you break it out, they run from, oh, a million and a half to five million dollars a year. Some of that scattered over several years, but we, we signed some pretty big contracts for stuff, and, and everything, you know, everything works pretty good. We got some checks and balances in there to make sure everything's getting done like it's supposed to, and I know a few of y'all that's been at the meetings, and we have, we have lengthy discussions, our reports just gets lengthy about making sure all this stuff's working like it's supposed to. But it's, I thought, we're trying, and it's, you know, this, this T M D L, this B map thing is gonna affect everybody. That's, everybody looks at it right now and saying it's, you know, it's agriculture, but about four more years from now, three years from now, if we haven't started this, reducing these nitrates, it ain't gonna be just agriculture, it's gonna be cities, towns, anybody is gonna get under, be under the gun, and, you know, we, hopefully it'll start, the nitrates will start trending down. It's, it's, it's a big issue, and all y'all know what agriculture is, the whole world knows about, about us now.
Yeah.
The Suwannee River Valley is a, is a hot place in the world to come farm. All the big boys want to come buy the land and farm here. And we do affect the world for, be amazed at what comes out of Suwannee County, fly in the world.
Mr. Jackson, we appreciate what y'all do.
Well, I don't, I think the tobacco program's gone. There's no, you can grow now if you want to, if you can contract with a company somewhere. The government has nothing to do with the tobacco lot, I'm saying, more.
Any, any further questions for Mr. Jackson?
I just have one more statement. The Soil Conservation District has been doing a lot of pilot programs recently with in, energy savings and things like that, and, and I just want to commend them for managing the program and making so many gains and helping local farmers save a lot of money. There's farmers right now that are on, that are putting electricity back into the grid from these, from these fixes that have been done with these upgrades, so it's not costing them anything, but they're actually putting money back into the grid.
We have that.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Jackson, since the gentleman asked about tobacco, you said you can grow it, but you got to do it under that company?
My understanding, yes, sir. I, we, we have, what, two, two tobacco growers left in Suwannee County? And they, they contract directly with some tobacco company. They don't, it's nothing to do with the government.
But can you cook it off if you, if you grow it? Can you cook it off?
If you, if you want to grow you some, you got a tobacco barn, yes, sir. If you want to plant it, I think so, yeah.
No, I don't want to plant it. I know what that stuff is all about.
He's tired of paying eight dollars a pack.
Oh, you want to roll your own?
No, I don't even smoke it, I don't smoke tobacco.
I, I, hey, if you know more about it, I do. I remember back when you tried to roll some up and smoke it, it'd be fell out out there in the field.
No, I grew up with it, so, so, I used to, back when they were, farmers growing tobacco, I cropped up many days in tobacco fields, and my father had some, and I really didn't want to have anything to do with it, but back then, I was, you know, that was something that teenagers gave them back in school. Now, you don't see it, but you see it up around Georgia, places like that.
It's, there's, there's, they might be, I don't, didn't they get rid of?
Yeah.
The programs, it's over with, but stabilization had, they finally sold everything they had, the price support side of it, where they'd take the back end, it wouldn't bring, I think all of it's gone, too. It's been several years since I've even heard anything about stabilization. But they, I think they still a stabilization board or something, but it.
All right.
We appreciate it.
We're gonna move on to our next one. Black van, anybody?
No van.
Nope.
No van.
Is that you? Oh, okay, okay. All right, Suwannee Valley Foresees.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Patty Stevenson, I'm the Fiscal Administrator for Suwannee Valley Foresees. First, I would like to thank you for our donation that we've received in the past, and I appreciate you allowing us to give you information about our program today. I just want to read a little bit. I've passed out some flyers, so you would have a little more information on, and I laid them in front of each of you. The Head Start Program was created 52 years ago to help meet the emotional, social, health, nutritional, and psychological needs of preschool-aged children from low-income families. The Early Head Start Program came about in 1995 to serve birth to three-year-olds and pregnant women. Nationwide, Head Start and Early Head Start serve over 1 million children and their families each year. As the local grantee for Head Start and Early Head Start in Columbia, Hamilton, Lafayette, and Suwannee Counties, our agency serves 470 children, birth to five-year-olds and their families each year. In Suwannee County specifically, we serve 56 birth-to-three-year-olds at our Azalea Park, which is Early Head Start, and 92 preschoolers in Branford, and at our Live Oak Learning Center. The vast majority of families served are below the federal poverty level. Foster children, homeless children, and children with disabilities are automatically eligible. So, we serve the neediest of the needy children each year in Suwannee County. We are not a daycare, our program services are very comprehensive and too generational with the intention of getting at-risk children ready for school and setting families on a stable path towards self-sufficiency. We provide individualized children and family services, including education, and early childhood development, nutrition, health, social services, family services, and parent involvement. We extend an invitation to you all to visit our centers, if you haven't yet, and see for yourselves the difference we are making in Suwannee County, and there are addresses provided on those flyers I handed out to you all. We are requesting $10,000 donation to support obtaining necessary classroom materials and equipment. Our, our program is required to obtain 20% of the funding needs each year through help from the community, which is approximately 1.2 million in match each year. Although we are able to obtain some of this through volunteer donations of time and space donations, we really do need cash contributions as well to support our classrooms. Do you have any questions?
Any questions?
Foresees, foresees. One question I have is the additional funding comes from, is it a percentage of that we're doing or what?
The additional funding that we're required to.
Well, you're asking for 5,000 extra.
No, well, they, they've asked for 10,000 every year, and they've been funded 10,000 up until a couple of years ago. I believe we cut them to nothing.
Yes, that is correct. And last year, we did receive 5,000.
5,000 last year.
Yes, we were trying to get back to what we were being funded in the past.
What type of, I know you handle, you go over into other counties, so do you have the percentage breakdown of the number of children that you work with here in the Head Start Program versus the other counties?
I, I don't at this time, I apologize, I can get back to you on that. I, we do receive support from all the other counties that we serve right now, I know that piece.
I have, have the answer to that. 31% is helped out in our county, based on these numbers right here.
Okay.
And it comes up with a $10,000 request from them, turns out, to the 148 people that are served in this county, to $67.56 a person and, per year.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any, any questions?
Yeah, I have one question. Do you guys work with any of the other early learning programs? I know Suwannee County has one of their own through the school system, do you guys work with them at all, or?
Well, we have, we do have VPK that we offer, and we utilize any services that are available within the counties to collaborate with them, if that answered the question. Not really sure as far as like the different things that we have available to us.
All right. What's the wishes, y'all? I'm, I'm fine with leaving it at the same level that we left it last year.
I'm good with it.
I, you know, this is a program, as long as there's not any overlap, Head Start Program's a good program, and I don't have a problem with increasing it back up to the $10,000 level.
Actually, I don't have a problem increasing it either.
You're the decision, you're the 10 or 5?
Oh, Mr. Chairman, would, would you rather we go through it, all of it?
We can, and.
I'd rather do it that way.
Okay. So, we'll hold off?
Hold on, figure it out, but you definitely got 5 right now.
Okay, we do appreciate that. Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right. Genialical Society?
Good morning, I'm Al Williams, and this is Jeanie Hancock, our perpetual President of the Society. We're here to ask that you continue to support us in the amount that you've been providing us with, and we'll let you know that we do have two fundraisers on our own. We have a Christmas on the Square fundraiser, and then we did the Chicken Perlo here recently, about four or five months ago, and, and other than that, and what the city provides in the membership dues, and some fees for copies, it's about all we have to preserve the family history that is, to me, is very important for each and every one of us. And if you haven't been over to see us, we're right next door, behind you, on the north side of you, you should come by and, and visit us and take a look, you might be interested in what you find.
Any questions? Thank y'all for what you do. Thank you. United Way? Yeah, since we stopped with that one, yes, ma'am.
Good morning, I'm Rita Joffe, United Way of Suwannee Valley Executive Director. I think I know most of you, and thank you for the hard work you all do, especially this time of year, and the staff as well, who I'm sure have been overwhelmed just about with this big task every year, plus hearing all of us, so it's much appreciated. You all should have a letter that I drafted and submitted, and it explains what we're working on. We're trying to bring to conclusion our capital campaign. You may have seen recently that they kind of, the Capital Campaign Committee called it, called it done. We do have commitments that will come in between now and the end of 2019, but in the meantime, we'd like to go ahead and extend wish the mortgage, knowing that there will be things that we will need to have a building fund for with the additional funds that should continue to come in as a result of pledges that have been received. For instance, they made a conscious decision not to replace things that were working, even though they were past the end of their useful life, i.e. three air conditioning units, one of which we have already replaced, that two more will hang in there until they don't hang in there any longer. So, we know that there are things that we will have to be, be prepared for. You should all have a PowerPoint that I provided color copies of, to feel blessed, because we don't usually run color copies, so, because we're cheap. But there's just three things in there that I wanted to point out that are updates from when I submitted this to the county. We are now down to about $38,000 as opposed to the 86 that I think that this shows, because we were about at 86 at the time I did this, and we're down to about 38 now. So, we are plugging away at it very hard. They also wanted to, the Capital Campaign Committee wanted to really make an effort to, to bring this to conclusion before it was time to start our general community fundraising campaign, to make sure there was no sense of, in the community's minds, in terms of overlap of the, the two efforts, because they're completely separate. Additionally, on Grant Fund Secured fiscal year 1516 on that page, I can now, would be able to update that with 151617, because I've got three new contracts on my desk right now. Amongst some of the agencies that benefit, it's Vivid Visions and other, another way, Catholic Charities, I think, we even administer part of it. Oh, and C D, uh, C D S, the youth shelter, so some of the other agencies benefit, but we receive those funds and administer those funds, and it helps it for the agencies who are the subrecipients to receive it on a more continuous basis and not have to submit their own applications for it. So, it streamlines the process to have one application on behalf, and it's the way the state makes us do it now, anyway. But it's, I think it's been a benefit for the agency, so that's been a help, help to them. So, more, more income is always a good thing. We can do more as a result of having the additional office. I've added at least three, four, five staff. By moving into the new office, I've been able to apply for more grants, add more staff, provide more services, which we could not have done unless we moved into it. So, even if we're over here, out in the counties, or in the school system, or whatever we're doing, we still have to have an. we still have to have an office from which to function. So, any support you all could provide is much appreciated. We would like to knock this off and be done with it. So, thanks again for all of your efforts. Are there any questions y'all have for me?
Any questions?
No.
I noticed that you, is this correct, or maybe I'm reading this wrong? You're the lead agency for Local Homeless Coalition submits one application for each of the grants listed for one of our, one of our groups that we support already. I'm just curious, is there any overlap in our funding?
No, there's not, because even the grants that we get, we may be applying for it on behalf of the agencies and like I said, the state has gotten where that's how they want it done, so that we do all those grants that are for any kind of homelessness or homeless prevention. And they still have to have match. So, we still have to have match and United Way doesn't have enough money to have all that match on behalf of all the agencies, since now it's one being collaborative application. So, those agencies still have to have match dollars. So, there isn't any overlap at all in terms of the funds that we apply for and receive on behalf of the agencies that you all also are hearing from as part of your budget requests. That's a very good question. Any other good questions? Any questions at all?
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you all again for all your hard work and for your consideration.
Vivid Visions?
Good morning. Better lower that a little bit. I'm Kathy White. I'm the executive director for Vivid Visions and we are the certified domestic violence center and shelter for Swanee County. We were started, of course, back in 1995 and we've been serving Swanee County for many years. Vivid Visions has been struggling this past year. Many of our, well, all of our grants, basically, are reimbursement grants. So, in order to receive funds from these grants that we are awarded, we have to spend it upfront. And when your cash flow is low, that makes it very hard. Two years ago, we were not awarded one grant, not because of anything that we've done. It was just a matter of, there was a lot of people that were funded that year and we were kind of far down on the list with funding. So, that hurt us, that set us back, that put us into a, we were still spending money. We had to, to keep operating. So, you know, that, we had to tap into our line of credit, unfortunately. So, that has, you know, set us back a little bit. This year, we did ask for a little bit more, trying to raise our funds. We are currently doing a, several fundraisers throughout the years. We are doing, on a quarterly basis, Swanee Go-Historic Tours. I don't know if you've heard of that. Cindy Robinson, who was on our board, she has started this. It's going fairly well. Our next one will be in October. We worked this with the Swanee Valley Transit. They, you know, provide the transportation and we do that. It's about two hours long. And then this past April, we did a mail-out, because we were, we were at the point to where we literally were considering closing our shelter. And that's very sad to think that, in the middle of the night, when law enforcement calls and says that they have a mom and three kids and they need a place to go, you know, there won't be a place if we can't keep going. So, we're limping along right now. We're doing the best that we can. We've cut costs. We too, night before last, I spent till nine something the other night, because our air conditioner was out and I had a house full of people with babies, newborns. And we had to have the air conditioner fixed. So, I stayed there, we got it going. Our unit is also getting a little old, so, you know, we haven't been able to put a lot of funds into it to keep it up to date and keep it physically going well. We're getting by, but we desperately need assistance from the county and from anyone else that we can get it from. And we're desperately searching for more grants and stuff too, as well. As, you know, Rita, Rita can attest to that. She works with us a lot in trying to help us find grants, different grants. This year, in 2016, just to let you know, that domestic violence for Swanee County was up 22%. The year before, it was up 50%, so it did come down some. But, those are just reported cases. That's not all the cases that are happening in Swanee County, unfortunately. So, this past year, we did provide 4,973 shelter nights to the victims of domestic violence in our community. Is there any questions that you have?
Just, at this point, without looking for an additional grant money, what's the amount of grants that you apply for on a yearly basis at this point?
It's about 400, about 410,000, something like that. We get a grant from the Office of the Attorney General, which actually pays mostly for our salaries for our shelter employees, which we have seven shelter workers and they work, you know, they're there seven days a week, 24 hours a day. And that is a $212,000 grant. We receive 155,000 from the Florida Coalition Against Domestic Violence, who is our coalition, who serves 42 centers across the state of Florida. We do get funding from United Way. We guess also are part of the Emergency Solutions Grant, the Challenge Grant. We get some funds from that. The Challenge Grant, we try and use that for housing, to try and get people back into, on their own, to help them get out on their own from our shelter.
And what's the average match that you're looking at? Like, for instance, the Attorney General's?
That one is a large match. That is, let's see, I believe that one is 5,000 plus salary. There's 25% of my salary that is part of that. Actually, it's more than that. It's about, I want to, no, it was 58,000 is what we need for match on that one. I'm looking at, thinking my numbers and it's 58,000 on that. And that includes my salary, part of my salary.
Thank you.
Any more questions?
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to come this morning and talk to you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Kind of early, is Meridian Healthcare here? Who are you with? I'm sorry. I don't have you on here. Oh, okay. All right. They don't have him on here, but I'll let him go.
Okay. I have the amended one, but.
I didn't have you on here, but.
There's actually two different ones. My names on one, they're sent by mail. And the other one, I picked up.
Since you got one, well, I'll let you go ahead. You can go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
I should need to holler then. I'm Thomas J. Skursky, a former chairman of the museum and now I'm the president of the Swanee Valley Heritage Museum Incorporated, 501(c)(3) by the state of Florida. We have moved on with the museum association and not left it in a association anymore. It's a corporation. So, nobody needs to dissolve the board. Actually, it kind of imploded. Our chairman died, Mr. Jerry Scott. He was the last one to come to a board meeting and he and I discussed how we had accomplished making it into a corporation. And he was pleased with everything and he died eight days later, after we had a real good meal. John Hale has resigned and Sam Carter's the only one that's actually been active on that board, so I've decided to dissolve it if, you know, by letter or whatever way y'all want me to send the, send the information to you.
Okay.
So, we have applied for a grant for the museum building of $440,000. And since we didn't own the building, we've given that to the Historical Society to receive, I think in August next year. In the meantime, between now and then, basically, we've got to get everything out of the building so they can work on it and they start replacing that roof, those artifacts, the historical. Family heirlooms we got in there has to be stored where they won't, you know, get termites or bugs in them. So, we might be asking y'all for a grant or either bring everybody in the jailhouse over there for about an hour and we'll move it all out.
All right, sir.
And, and the building has to be, of course, kept up in the meantime, from the roof down to the foundation. We've got some flooding going on underneath the building. Also, the Passenger Depot was flooding yesterday with all of the parking lot coming in on top of that ramp and going underneath it, I guess, in a sinkhole, because it flooded and it never backed up. But the grate beside it will not accept the amount of water that falls from that parking lot. So, I don't know who to talk about it, so I figured I'd bring that up today, because that's an issue that's causing the foundation on the Passenger Depot to crack and split and it's also getting inside the building.
All right.
We want, we didn't spend that much money to lose that building from rainfall.
I agree.
I would, I would assume that y'all would take action immediately and take that deck out and find out where that water is going to.
Any questions?
Oh, and I didn't come here to ask for any funding, by the way.
All right.
Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Meridian Behavioral? Ready, Larry? Swanee Valley Transit?
Yeah. We've got an agreement, basically, same as last year. I think last year, we were underfunded by about $414. We presently, just to let you know, since 2015, we're picking up about 500 more people a month than we were. We were in the red at one time and we are now in the black. And any help from the county is greatly appreciated. We're still struggling with what we do, but we're paying our bills and paychecks don't bounce. So, I appreciate all y'all can do for us.
Any questions?
Question, just as clarification to understand this. We have these, a couple of them down here at the other agencies. It says, 39,500 included in current budget. So, this is in, is this in addition to?
These are, this is an outside agency request that we have an interlocal agreement with three county, or with two other counties?
With the current budget. Is that coming out of general fund or? Excuse me? Road Department?
39,914 is just basically due to the math of the total population of the county times .90 or 90 cents per capita and that's where you come up with 39,914. Last year, y'all funded it at 39,500, so that's the difference.
Okay. So, I guess the question I've got, are we, is the 414 what we're dealing with or is the 39?
414.
$14. Okay, I don't know why we're dealing with this. 414 is not much. Okay, that's what I'm trying to understand that.
Okay. They present their budget every year.
Understand.
Chamber of Commerce, Jimmy Norris. You ready?
Good morning. I certainly appreciate the chance to be in here. As you know, our request is same as it was last year. You guys pretty much are familiar with what we do at the chamber. We're kind of the one-stop shop when anyone's coming into the community or the go-to person to find out anything in the city, county. We send folks to you guys, we send them to Dr. Jackson. Also, like it or not, they still come to us looking for maps and brochures and they want to know anything about the community. So, I'll keep it pretty simple. You know, we try to do anything we can to promote this community. We're proud of it, we love it, and so our request, like I say, is the same as last year. I do, I do want to mention one thing. I think maybe a lot of folks aren't aware that we house the Small Business Development Center there. I know many of you are aware here, but public in general. Ms. Catherine Allen was a huge part of getting that for us, put together along with Bruce Tillman years ago over at the chamber. And I spoke with Mark the other day, just to let you know, in University of North Florida, who he works for, put together a little information for us. And just since he has been located there in the chamber the last two years, the economic impact directly from his job has been $10.5 million to this community and 64 jobs. That is a service that we are proud to provide, but all other counties where small business development is located, to give you a few, like Clay County, St. John's, Nassau, Putnam, all of these other counties, minimum that the county pays is $32,000 to house them in their community. It's a requirement. I don't know how Ms. Catherine was able to help us get him here and work around that. We do not have to pay him that, but we are responsible for, you know, his overhead and any of the materials, anything he uses in his housing. And so, we take that upon ourself. I thought you would just be interested to know that the impact that Mark is having within the chamber and that the great deal that we're getting, because basically we're saving the county having to pay for that office to be located here. So, not a lot other than that, unless you guys have some questions?
Any questions?
I do. I'm always curious about things. So, how much overlap do we have? What exactly does Mark do in the small business development that we don't do in our, in our economic development?
It's different. You know, Dr. Jackson, he's out looking for new stuff and jobs and things like that all over the country, I guess. Mark's specialty is, you're a small business guy, you want to start building widgets. You have no idea how to do that. So, you come talk to Mark, he sits down, he puts you a business plan together. He looks financially at, you know, maybe what resources you have or that he can help you acquire. He also has the ability to then help you get some grant dollars to get your business started.
Okay.
He also, maybe you've been building widgets for five years and you're struggling. You're caught between, you know, getting them produced and making a profit. He will also sit down with you and help you take it from already being in existence to figuring out how to make it successful. So, a lot of his stuff is also preventive maintenance. And we don't see those 2, 3, 400 jobs at a time with him. What we see with Mark is that, you know, small business owner that's got three jobs or four jobs or five jobs and him making those people very viable to the community and helping their business succeed. So, it's more of a sustainable type of growth. It's not a huge jump, but, you know, it is very, very important. And the people that bring in and come to see him are very, very pleased. I mean, there's business, I'll use like the yogurt shop, you know, that's opened over here. That's one of his projects. So, there's many, many of them around and I just think a lot of people don't realize that. It's there and so we're proud that he's there at Chamber and we're able to help with that.
Jimmy, one more question.
Yes, sir.
I know we've had a history of struggle with getting a chamber down in the south end of the county. Is that something that still could be revived in the future?
Is that something that still could be revived in the future if we have enough interest?
I'm sure it could. You know, we tried as the Chamber a few years ago to go make a kind of a push down there. Held a couple of meetings to try to get some interest. Even brought a speaker in that worked with Duke Energy that came all the way from South Florida from their plant to speak. And we only had a couple of people show up to even hear the program. And so we certainly don't mind. I've been making a trip down there about once a week in the last several months just to try to let them know we're around and if there's anything we can do. But it would be a little hard since it is nonprofit to, you know, kind of have an office there, maybe.
Sure, certainly, as long as we had some participation.
Oh, yeah, yeah, no, we definitely, we try very hard to get, get the south end up here.
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
I believe that lady from Meridian's here.
Meridian? All right. Morning.
I have some updated information for you from the budget, initial budget request. We actually have data for the entire last year. I'm Dr. Maggie Labarta, I am the CEO at Meridian, and I want to thank you for giving me the opportunity to come before you, talk a little bit about the services we have provided in our funding request. The first few pages, the first few slides in there are an overview of 2016. This year's going to be a little bit bigger than that in terms of total numbers. We will have served much closer to 19,000 people in treatment this year and probably about the same amount in terms of outreach and prevention. Clearly, we've served a lot of people across the many, many counties. If you go to the slide that starts that says Swanee County, I'll give you some specifics about services here. We've seen about the same number of people this year as last year, but we've seen an increase in the volume of services that we've provided those folks. I think we've been more active, particularly in the schools. And so that that has increased the actual amount of care that we've been providing in the county and also in our programs in Lake City that are residential programs in Gainesville that serve Swanee County residents. 83% of the people we're seeing are at or below federal poverty guidelines. That is still our priority population. And everyone that we have seen from Swanee County qualifies under the state guidelines for some level of subsidy for their care. And those are state funds and also where the county matching dollars come into play in terms of serving those individuals. Based on the poverty rate in Swanee County, we've seen about 3.25% of the overall population, but 12% of those folks that are within federal poverty guidelines have come through Meridian at some point in the last year. And I think that's important to know, that's a high-stress population. We've seen that number kind of climb a little bit with economic issues that have affected folks over the last several years. We see the entire age range, so our services include children and adults, mental health and substance abuse. And by and large, the folks that we're seeing, depression and substance use disorders, are the most significant problems that we're dealing with in this county. Obviously, also people with severe and persistent mental illness. That's the folks that have the most severe forms of the illness are the ones that we see most continuously and consistently. So are things related to trauma, whether that's child abuse, assaults, those kinds of things, people come in then with mental health issues. There's sometimes very often substance use issues that relate to that. One of the things we see, for example, in our program for women who are pregnant and addicted to drugs is that many of them have extensive histories of abuse early on in their lives or rape, or both in many cases. But we're also seeing a lot of children. As you can, if you look at that age graph, we're seeing a fair number of folks that are under 18 in this county. 30%, I'm sorry, yeah, 29, 30% are under 18s. And those are services that we're often providing in the schools or in the families' homes because access is always a challenge for the population. And the children that we see typically have either kind of emotional adjustment problems or behavioral disorders, and they're being referred by the school because they're unable to behave and control their emotions in developmentally appropriate ways. There is a slide that shows you that we're seeing people across all of our levels of care from here in Swanee County, including in our acute inpatient unit, where we saw this year 379 people from the county that required that level of care, although the majority of the folks that we're seeing are seen in our outpatient clinics. Medicaid is the largest funder of services here in the county, followed by our state and county matching funds for indigent care. We do have some contracts and some people with insurance, but by and large, again, consistent with the poverty data, the majority of the folks that we see have services that are funded either entirely or partially through state and federal government. Just to give you a comparison, the value of the services year over year, sort of consistent with the fact that we saw pretty much the same number of people, but we're well over $2 million worth of services in Swanee County for those clients. Interestingly, we opened a primary care clinic. One of the things that we found is that many of the folks that require mental illness treatment or substance use treatment, and particularly those with fairly severe problems, don't go to regular primary care clinics. They don't fit in, they're not welcome, they don't, they trust us, that's, we're their doctor. So we opened a primary care clinic in Gainesville on a grant, and we've seen eight people from Swanee County who are actually finding their way to Gainesville in order to be seen at this clinic. We're hoping by spring to open a clinic in Lake City that will, I think, if folks want to do that, be closer here. We've started working on a number of clinical trials, and we've talked about providing mental health first aid to some of the law enforcement folks up here as an aid to them when they get involved in a situation where there's law enforcement, and we would do that as a service that's, an uncharged service, free for the community to support their efforts. Last year, the legislature awarded us a children's community action team, which is really a wraparound program for kids that are at risk of removal in one form or another. It was based in Lake City. However, over half of the families that we've seen are from Swanee County. And that was just in the first 10 months that the program is up and running. We're also providing services for rapid rehousing for veterans. And one of the, also the new things that we started this year is, because Medicaid started to actually reimburse for it, is telepsychiatry and telehealth services, which has made it a lot easier for us to provide people access to psychiatry appointments, which are very hard to get. Psychiatrists are very scarce, rural communities are often the most affected. And we've already seen 192 people from Swanee County who have now got same or next day access to a psychiatrist because we've been using our telehealth services. And we're looking to expand that and working with Chansal Ivoke to help do consultations with them in their emergency room. So we have had steady funding for the last several years of $55,000 in cash match from the county, as well as the building. We share the space at the Health Department Building. And so obviously, that's an in-kind contribution. The way matching funds work for community mental health centers, the state via our managing entity, which controls our state dollar contract, tells us how much we have to come up with every year is local match. We serve 11 counties. I take the populations of those 11 counties, divide it out pro rata and say, you know, we need to generate a commensurate share of that match in those communities. So in Swanee County, that's about 180,000 out of the, over 2 million in match that we are required to generate. So what we're asking is that you start to increase, if you can, the cash match. We're asking for $60,000 this year. So we're hoping that you will be able to start to slowly increase in getting us somewhat closer to that. What happens is if we can't raise that match, then we have to figure out a way to do it as using our insurance dollars or client fee dollars to generate that match, which then means we can't use that money to match other grant funds. And so we like to keep that other funding available so we can get grants that also require match. We think that really Meridian provides an excellent value. $73 per person served last year is what the county provided in terms of subsidy to folks that otherwise would not be able to get this care. So we hope that you can see your way toward improving that. I do want to recognize that you have an excellent representative on our board from Swanee County. Mr. John Martz has been serving on the board, representing the county for the last several years as a very active member of that board. So I do want to acknowledge his service, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
Just clarification on one of your slides. There's some math that doesn't look right, I'm trying to figure out the difference.
Okay, so which slide?
At all levels of care.
At all levels of care, yes, sir?
Your right side, the totals match up. The additions to the left side, they do not.
So?
There's a lot more involved, and I've tried to subtract.
Yeah, so the top number is unduplicated. So it's distinct individuals served or distinct services. Others will not because you have people who have served, we have clients who are seen in multiple programs. So those 379, for example, in the 16, 17 year that were seen in acute care, that's not, the totals are not going to add because you've got people who are seen in acute care and then get follow-up and outpatient. So you can't sum up that column and come up to the 1497 at the top because people are often served in more than one program. So the individual count is the top number, there may be duplications in the other data.
Okay, so the total there doesn't necessarily reflect the total of that column?
No. It's, one is duplicated and one is not. So if you come into our crisis unit and then go to follow-up care and outpatient, you're going to count in both, except not at the top. It's a great question, I should have said that.
Any other questions?
Good.
Thank you very much.
Is this already figured in the budget, or is it always coming out of contingency? Okay. Florida Veterans Foundation. A little early for them. Do you know if anybody's coming for them? Have y'all heard? Ms. Harris? Have you heard if anybody was coming from the Florida Veterans Foundation? That's one, yeah, yeah. If they show up, I'll hear them. That's the licensing board for Ellis, and they requested all their counties put it on there, so I don't know if they have anybody coming or not. Well, the next two aren't, him and Hooked on Heroes aren't till around 11, so we're an hour early on them. So y'all want to just wait on those and go through the current list we have now?
How about we take a break real quick?
We can take a break.
Coffee.
That'll work, release break. I haven't drank enough yet. Start back at the top of this outside agency list and go down. Historical Commission requested 6,000. I think we all.
Yeah, we're good.
Approved that. Museum Association had no request. Animal Control, we approved that. And we're just going to deal with the other, at a board meeting. United Way of Swanee Valley. It was $5,000 request, I believe, didn't you say last year we did not fund them at all? That was a mistake on there. Yeah. I think we moved it from Swanee Valley to Vivid Visions last year. Vivid Vision was 10,000, we increased it to 15,000. That was not funded this year, they're asking for 5,000, so that would be a variance of 5,000. Up or down? I'm good with no funding. Leave it at zero? Yes. I believe you have no.
Three no, yeah.
Swanee Valley.
Swanee Valley.
United Way.
No, United Ways, no. Correct. No, one United Way.
Swanee Valley, Genetical Society, 1,500. I'm good with that. That was three yeses.
Yes.
ARC, I believe we were in agreeance on that.
Yes.
Swanee Valley, Four Seas, has asked for 10,000, which was an increase from 5,000 last year. I'm good at leaving them at 5.
Well, he was the deciding vote, I think, on it.
Well, that's why I didn't want to say it in front of them just like that, but I was the reason for doing the extra 5,000 when we didn't do it last year.
We zeroed them out the year before. It was basically their duplicative service of childcare.
Duplicated with who?
Any of your for-profit daycares. I mean, they all provide the same services. BPK is a provider that needs daycare.
So we're going to let's stay at five, you just broke the ties.
So we'll just leave it at five? Yes, ma'am. Vivid Vision has, we funded them at 15,000. They've requested an increase to 20,000.
They're making money on the side now, so.
They had a bad year this last year with some different grants and being reimbursed. I'm good honoring their request this year.
The 20?
We can, if we reduce it next year, that's fine, but they were to the point this year of almost shutting the doors. And I do believe that's a valued service in the county.
Absolutely, absolutely.
That's three?
Yes.
Yes. The Office of Criminal Conflict, I believe we have to fund that. Won't affect the contingency in next year to show up in the finer forfeiture budget. Okay. Swanee Valley Transit.
That's coming out of.
Public Works, and we'll add the 414 to it.
Yeah, Randy said he can carry it, right?
Yeah. He will. Buy the cheaper bottles instead of them high-dollar bottles.
Kill Town, provide the meat, how about that?
The Health Department, we heard them yesterday, but that's still in there. Chamber of Commerce, 10,000.
Yeah. I ain't got no problem with it.
I ain't got no problem with it. Jimmy didn't ask me to do this, but I'm going to do it because I've used him a lot this year. And ever since we've cut their funding, I felt guilty for calling him and requesting stuff. So I would request that we give them an extra $5,000 this year, if nobody has a problem.
What, I'm good with that too? Could you say that again?
Chamber of Commerce.
I didn't hear what you said.
I said we cut their funding, but I have relied on him heavily over the past year. And I said I feel guilty about it when I called him up and asked him something, knowing that we cut the funding.
Yeah.
So I was going to ask for an extra 10,000, I mean 5,000.
I thought maybe you'd.
10 was in the head.
I thought maybe you'd want to donate that money since you've used them quite a bit.
Ma'am?
15 total.
15. Jimmy will take 20.
I'm good with it.
And Jimmy did not put me up to that. He's shocked as the rest of y'all. Meridian Behavioral, 60,000. We have to fund them. I believe next year we're going to create a line for them that's going to come. Ms. Hancock?
Yes. It all, this will all count toward the 180 that we're supposed to be paying that we're not paying.
There was a confusion last year.
The confusion last year was is we had a change in the value of what the building was. We've gone back in this year, and in that last agreement that we had two weeks ago that we signed up here, we got the value back to where it was supposed to be. We're still, you know, when you look at the per capita across, you know, everything around, I think we're two cents now above what the average is with that increase in monies.
What is the reason why we have to... Are we supposed to fund 180,000?
It's a state mandate that we have a percentage of what their funding is based upon our population, and based upon our population, it'd be... Our percent would be $180,000, give or take, whatever the number is.
So if we did $60,000 and granted them the request, would that bring us to $180,000 with the in-kind?
No.
Or so short?
We're still way short. Yeah, well, that's included in the rent part that we put in, so...
So I guess my question is, is how are we getting away with Amanda without holding up to the mandate?
Because basically... Basically, what it is, is because we're a rural area, they're not pushing us. You know, rural area of economic concern, they're not pushing us. If they are able to, you heard her talk about with the insurance, you know, that they have and the other providers that they have, and they are also out there soliciting, you know, private donations and everything, and those private donations, you know, take up the slack, you know, for that. There may come a time, you know, that they, you know, press for it. When we had some budget problems three, four years ago, we went to zero on them, and that did create, you know, a problem for them. There are other counties, you know, that... I mean, we're right in line, you know, with everybody else now, but they also had some fiscal, you know, constraints going, you know, a couple of years ago, and we're now getting back to where we are. Am I saying that we're going to write them a check next year for $180,000? The answer is no.
No.
You know, but, you know, they're... We're moving, and now we're in line with everybody else, and I'm happy with that part.
Do we have to go 60 to meet that criteria or is it staying at 55,000?
But if we stayed at 55,000, we'll then be underneath the average. Okay? I mean, keep it...
Pretty close.
Yeah, well, with the 50... With the extra $5,000, it'll put us, you know, a dime below instead of being two cents above, so for the number of people that are served.
I would think that if we keep ourselves below the radar, we don't have to be flying high better than everybody else, but if we keep ourselves where we're just in line with everyone else, the state's less likely to call us out on it.
And that's the... And that's at the 60. That'll keep us right there.
I'm good with 60.
I'm good with it. We got three. All right. Mr. Ron's here. We're going to go let Hooked on Heroes give us a quick presentation and request. Well, I seen you sitting there.
My name is Ron Cadel. I am the president of the Hooked on Heroes. We're a nonprofit organization, 501(c)(3). We're based here in Live Oak. We take veterans on a one-day fishing trip. We go twice a year. We are starting into our third year of operations here in Live Oak. We are 100% volunteered personnel. We have no paid employees, so 100% of everything we get and receive goes to our veterans. We supply the rod, reel, hooks, lunch, coffee, donuts. All the veteran has to do is show up. We take veterans with and without disabilities on our fishing trips. We supply the boat owners with 15 gallons of gas to help offset their cost factors when they go with us to take the veterans out. All our boats are volunteer personnel, and our... 50% or more of our veterans come out of Live Oak. We do take out of county, out of state. We take veterans from all over. We don't just limit it to Live Oak, but we take most of ours out of Live Oak. We have a brochure I brought with me that I can give y'all that'll give us more information about us, but we're a organization that is growing and getting larger and needing more assistance, and we're requesting that if we could get a $1,000 donation, we're benefiting our veterans in our local area and our organization. That's about all I have.
Any questions?
Of course.
Go ahead.
How many veterans a year do you serve or do you... Have you been serving, and what's the growth rate you've seen year-on-year?
We've been averaging about 100 to 115 veterans per trip. We do two trips a year. We have over 250 veterans signed up to go, but we have to organize it out because of the fact of the boat captains that we have that we can take. It determines how many veterans we can take, but we have 200, over 255 that are signed up that would like to go.
Matter of fact, you're still needing boats, correct?
Oh, yeah. Constantly need boats.
So anybody's got a boat, want to volunteer, go fishing, they could use a boat. I participated in it, I know for the last three years.
I've also participated in it.
It's a good trip.
It's a good thing you guys do.
It is.
It is.
Yes.
I didn't hear what you said.
Ray.
Yes, Ray. Matter of fact, they...
You mentioned that.
Yeah, they were the... They hosted, I guess what you'd say, the Veterans Day Parade.
Right, we carried it last year, yeah.
Yeah. They're very active in the community. They... 100% of the funds go to the veterans, and I'd ask that we honor their request.
I have a problem with it. I'm good.
I'm good. You got three.
I support it.
Thank you, Ron.
Thank you for what you do.
Do you want to go ahead and decide something on the Florida Veterans Foundation? I don't think anybody's here, and I don't know that anybody's coming for it.
I'm not against their organization, but I'm going to say...
Their organization does a good thing.
Yeah.
It's a state organization.
Right.
They're the one that provide the licensing or the certification for our Veterans Affairs guy, Ellis Gray. This year, they've just asked every officer they've got in the county to ask their county to do a $10,000 request countywide. Me and him talked about it, and I just didn't see the need for us to send 10 grand to Tallahassee in hopes that it comes back to Swanee County. He kind of agreed with me on it, so...
Good.
All right. Got three noes on that one, or? Yes. No on the Veterans Foundation. I think that's all our outside agencies, isn't it? Or am I missing any?
Mm-hmm. You got it all. Jimmy, can you see where we at now?
Ma'am?
Yes, it's a no.
Can you see where we at, Rick?
Yeah. Was... Yeah, let's get a contingency total.
957, 300.
957, 300. You say nine and five?
957, 300. Out of its left, out of that list that we just went through, Swanee Valley Transit was already budgeted. Health Department was already budgeted. Was that the only two that were?
Yeah.
Well, no, you said...
Office Criminal Conflict.
That came out of final forfeiture.
We're going to add that, but...
But I'm...
But you put it in fine.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That's the one.
Everything else come out of contingency?
Uh, just for Larry's.
Yeah, the Health Department, Swanee Valley Transit, Office of Criminal Conflict, everything else.
So other than Meridian, that should have been in the budget, 88,000 for actual outside
88,000?
10 for animal control, 29 for arts, 6 for the museum, geological, Four Seas, Vivid Vision, Swanee Valley, 10,000 above.
What'd you get?
88,000 is actual outside agency.
So Meridian will go into the budget?
It should have been in the budget.
So it's going back to general... Would that be general fund?
Well, it's still going to come out of contingency.
Contingency.
Yeah. This year, but next year, when you get your budget, it'll already be budgeted in.
Okay.
All we'll do is look at it and see what the increase is and whether we're going to honor the increase, or... And we may not fund it at all. Just depends on how our budget is. But it won't be coming off of our contingency at the end. It'll be budgeted in.
You're just trying to make the title a little bit more understandable on the outside agency list.
Yeah, for me, when we first... When I first came on the board, outside agency list consisted of things that we had no choice in funding, but by statute we had to, and to me, that's not really an outside agency. That's a mandate. These ones that equal 88,000 are true outside agencies that are not affiliated with the state or the county, and we had tried to set that number so that we could keep it under as 150,000, 100... And so far, on our true outside agencies, we're doing a good job keeping it at 88,000.
So just the outside agencies are 88,000?
Right. I mean, the other ones are outside agencies. They're not under the county, but there's some sort of mandate or statute that says we're funding them.
All right, one question. I've got... I come up with 79,000. I'm trying to figure out where the 9,000 discrepancy is on it.
From the 88?
Yeah, from the 88.
Probably $3,402 as part of it, and then 5,000...
3,402 is out of...
Final forfeiture.
Out of final forfeiture.
And 10, Arc, 29, Four Seas, 5, 6. There. Geological, 1,500. The Stational.
I got a store for you.
1,000. 1,000. 6,000.
Six.
I want to call them in the museum. Sorry, Eric.
Six for one half dozen of the other. I didn't catch all that.
That was a big blow pile. Do you want this page? Do you want to send the six that they gave Mike twelve?
Let me finish adding this to see if I come up with the same thing, then.
It's booked.
I got it.
Take it.
Yeah.
Nah. They will, yeah. But what I'm saying is, this will be yours. Keep your money in it, then you'll...
All right.
That's true. Yeah. I'm just going to study it.
What do you want to go to? Do you want to go to the stuff we talked about yesterday? I'm done with this list I had. Mr. Hancock?
On the criminal services?
Yes, sir.
Did y'all bring that in? 10, I want to know.
10.
Chris, there was... I was confused because I thought Sheriff was at the end. His budget and the board was...
The sheriff doesn't have this in his budget. There's a board that was set up.
It's just 10.
It's just 10.
Yeah.
And we're just looking away at doing that governing board, possibly.
I was confused.
Gotcha. Ms. Harris?
I found another $24,000 revenue. I think we should adjust this funds that people have applied. 2,000. Got the things that we discussed yesterday. We have been busy contacting pre-entirely on these knuckle boom trucks regarding the lease. We have done successfully, yes. Most of your leases are funded by finance companies that will buy, like I mentioned yesterday, they'll take it from the manufacturer. They'll set up a finance program. They'll handle the lease to us and/or... We will then be trying that. I was still asking, and I don't know who resolved this matter yesterday, but I was going to try to get some clarification.
What page was that on?
The original tab, 960 in there. It's already included in the truck. It's solid weight, it's a knuckle boom truck. It's a 26-yard truck, and I want to change that to a 40-yard truck, and we may...
Oh, we said, yeah.
Going forward, find the 40-yard truck. It's a volume we're trying to clear out of these collection sites.
Wrote this somewhere. Where was that added? Over here, just on this one right here.
I thought we said you're okay on that.
Solid waste, yeah.
Didn't we?
I got it.
205, I was good with that.
Yeah.
But so far, we've accounted these if we do work on that. You know, in the future, but so far, we need to do that.
When you said these are items are included in the budget, so this... Would these... This knuckle boom truck be able to come out of solid waste funds?
That's correct.
So it's not something that comes out of the sees at all?
No.
If you can't do it, we've got those funds, Adam.
The other question that y'all asked was about opening up for five hours on Sunday. Numbers that we run on that is just about $37,000.
Is that all? All collection sites?
14 sites.
Yeah, don't need to pick and choose. If we're going to do them, do them all.
I'm going to be honest with you. We really don't have a problem with these issues, but if you want to do it, I mean, you could overdo it more if you wanted to, but we don't have a problem with these issues. When the one that you referenced down south, what was experienced there initially wasn't unlike what's happened in other locations additional. So it went from ready to abide by the law. You can throw your garbage on the ground, it stayed abide by the law. That's what happened everywhere. So...
I'm inclined to disagree with, all due respect to our chairman. I think that we can do it on an individual site basis. We can, and it'd be successful, and we can deal with these issues with minimal effect to our budget. I would ask, but I am willing to... I realize that this is going to be mostly a seasonal issue, but I am willing to take it back on it and wait this thing out, but I believe that we're going to need to deal with something on it because I think the problem's going to grow.
I'm not saying we have to act on it this year, but I would still like to budget 37 for it, just on the in case.
I see what you're saying. I just...
Yeah, the money's there.
Yeah.
So it's after... I'll be honest with you, we just haven't had a problem. The initial problem's run away everywhere with the sheriff's department got called. With that big red sign out front that says you can't dump your garbage here illegally on the ground. With sheriff's department enforcing that, what else would be... But I'm going to share something with you. I don't know if Mr. John's here. One day, we pulled into a collection site. I pulled in to check a fence and gate issue. We were sitting in the driveway. Someone drove right past us, right up to the fence. It was locked up. A person got out, grabbed a bag of garbage out of the back of their truck, walked right over and read that red white sign, turned around and threw their garbage on the ground and got back in their truck and drove on. The sheriff's department went to them and made them act like responsible adults, and we don't have that problem at that location. truck, walked right over and read that red white sign, turned around and threw their garbage on the ground, and got back in their truck and drove on. The sheriff's department went to them and made them act like responsible adults. And we don't have that problem at that location, but we don't have that problem at any of the locations now. And when it occurs, the sheriff's department enforces the rule of law, and people abide by that. So we've got money in the budget, you don't have to do anything to change anything. If we decide that people will not live by the rule of law, we want to oblige them, we can open these things up and do something different. But for now, that that was experienced in the south end isn't unlike what was experienced in other locations additional, some other locations additional, some of them we didn't have any criteria, uh, and the vast majority we did, but we did have some. Uh, maybe ten or twelve occasions, uh, across the entire county that run away. They just run away, the sheriff's department got serious about it, they put the information out on, I don't know, this, some social media account that they use, but it worked, they said we're gonna enforce the law. And we're not having a problem countywide, if the money is there, it's already in the budget, I just wanna tell you what it would cost, do something of that nature. Right now, we don't have a problem.
And that was for, Mr. Chairman, that was for how many hours on Sunday?
Five hours on Sunday.
At each location, each collection site?
Mr. Chairman, I'll walk back what I said, as far as you're concerned, is, I, I do believe that if the problem is, and I, and I say this to the extent that I believe that the, the problem is limited to certain districts, but the concern is countywide over an extra amount of time during the weekend that, that people who are on Sundays can, can dump it, I, I think that it would be, uh, something that would make some people happy, obviously not make a lot of people happy, but I do believe that thirty-seven thousand dollars could be worked into the budget without additional, um, hirings, because we have, our part timers are, are offset, I believe, by the attendance are less, are more than the, um, the helpers or the, the assistants in the, um, the site attendants, the floaters, uh, tend to get less hours, is that correct? And so additional hours could, could, would help them. So we wouldn't have to go over thirty hours for any of the employees, correct? And I, if it would be countywide issue, if it's something that would make everyone happy, I know I get a lot of complaints from people who just seem like they don't believe that if they pay taxes for being able to dump their garbage, they have the right to be able to dump their garbage, and those walkthrough gates were important for them to be, feel like that they can dump it even if they don't get the privilege of driving it in, they can still walk it through. That's, that's where, where I stand on it, I just, I, I don't have a problem without the walkthrough gates personally, because I dump my garbage when the gates are open, because I'm lazy, I just don't like to walk all that garbage in. But that doesn't mean that people who work six days a week, who aren't able to get there, and now they've got to adjust their schedules to be able to try to get in there on time that they can't, and then when you add the folks that are coming down from, uh, up north and, or from other counties going into these, uh, into the river area, that they only have Sundays to dump their garbage, because that's when they leave. And, and to me, that's just the issue.
The biggest, the biggest complaint, the most complaint I have has just been an issue with Sunday. That's been my, out of all the phone calls I've got, um, the biggest concern with Sundays for me, all the people that call me about it. But it's, we're not gonna decide it today, I, I just wanted a cost on it. It, it, the money's in the contingency, and so, solid waste budget to do it if we decide through the year.
I've got a few other things here, one, the, uh... I had Jamie run in some more information, because we went back and looked at terms on some of that equipment.
Well, he's coming up here, what's a yard dog?
A yard dog is really an aggravation to us, it's a piece of, it's a smaller piece of equipment, uh, smaller than a, uh, semi tractor, we're pulling the trailer down, we have to transport it.
Probably goats.
Once each of the paper companies come, they go, gives our men more time to ensure that they've loaded trailers to the maximum weight without going over.
Thank you, sir.
We run them across the field, move them around there.
Okay.
Y'all are part of the business, you have huge regular semi tractor, and it's just more cumbersome to do that, it's a lot faster and efficient than using the others.
Yeah.
I just want, I just want...
In UPS, we call them yard birds, but they're just a shorter wheel base, easier to maneuver, some of them, the fifth wheel raises up and down, so you don't have to get out and crank them, you just raise it up underneath it and take off, it's a lot quicker.
Some people call them goats.
I just wasn't familiar with yard dog, I was, kind of expensive for an old hound.
What is it?
Side.
Okay, some of these pieces of equipment, Jenny went back and talked to companies, checked some of the terms on some of this, and just put some of this bit around, but more importantly, I asked him to try to clean up the revenue sides that you can see a very clear picture of this, uh, effective, the revenue. Go ahead, Jamie, just cover your...
Okay. Uh, spent on the phone with the, our truck committee, in-house truck committee, we talked, um, I talked to leasing companies and manufacturers last night. EMS revenue stays the same at three ninety-two. You have special event revenue coming in of eighty thousand, so that's your rolling revenue per year of four seventy-three, one eighty, one forty-eight. Okay, if we purchase the ambulances, on a lease purchase, for four years, we go out one more year, they're still covered under their warranty with those chassis, we go from five fifty-eight to four twenty-nine. So that is covered with the rolling revenue, under warranty the entire time we have it, so zero contingency, zero general fund input.
Rolling revenue is...
Yes, sir. So, and we would have to budget it, so we would run that up. Okay, so with that being said, now, yesterday, we had the one forty-four that we were using for a reach chassis that we were rolling this year. Now that is still out there available, we've talked about retention. I know there's been some discussions back and forth, but currently, the board has factored in fifty cent increase across the board for fire rescue for retention, or for, just for, across the board countywide. That's already budgeted within the, the budget, so that's already come out of your contingency. Or the, the eighteen that they've had to factor back in. The eighteen that we discussed yesterday go back with the one percent, and the, the fifty cents to all employees versus just a new starting, there were eighteen.
Yeah.
So that's the only figure that would change. If you take the one forty-four of available revenue that sit, or available funds that are sitting there that we were gonna use yesterday, you apply those to a dollar an hour across the board, on top of the fifty cents, that gives you a dollar fifty to help retention. Total cost for that dollar is two thirty-two, three oh eight. Fires portion will be sixty-two thousand, seven twenty-three, general fund will be one sixty-nine, five eighty-four, which leaves you a remaining fu, uh, funding amount of twenty-five thousand. If you come up to your revenue line, that you were gonna purchase the ambulances out of, you have a remaining forty thousand dollars, roughly forty thousand dollars. There you go. So you can purchase the ambulances, give a dollar increase, so that would get your rate to fourteen oh seven an hour. So if, if you go back to that comparison sheet, you're in, you're slightly on the high side of mid-range, without any general fund increase. So you have your six ambulances on lease for every four years, and you have your retention fixed based off revenue that is brought in from EMS and funds that are already budgeted in the budget currently.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
The, uh, the increase, what was it based on, how many employees, fifty-eight, that's currently on?
Yes, fifty-nine current, current employees.
If you count what we had on the sheet, it was...
Yeah, fifty-eight, fifty-nine.
Vacancies is fifty-eight or fifty-nine, okay. That's all I need.
So the only number that would change would be your fifty cent number, uh, when you had the discussion yesterday, that eighteen personnel would be the only non-factor, non-factor funding.
So you're adding a dollar on top of the fifty cent for retention, or for...
Yes, sir. So they're getting a dollar fifty total, the fifty cent countywide across the board, and then the dollar on top of that.
Mr. Chairman, I'm curious what this is gonna do in the rest of, I know these guys are underpaid, there's a lot of other staff that are underpaid as well, uh, in the county, I'm wondering what this is gonna do with the rest of the county, since we're not giving them that type of paid increase.
Tell me something, I, I don't mind telling you all this, the reality is, you got, you got first responders qualified for food stamps today, those people that make, we start at ten dollars and fifty cents an hour driving dump trucks, don't have to go to school for how many months?
Uh, paramedics one year, plus pre-rex and fire school and EMT schools another year, so they got two years of education.
These people are paying for their education, so they come to work for us and barely get paid. These other people have to have a CDL, dump truck driving.
Turn it around, like he said, retraining, redoing.
Most of your...
That's what I'm fixing to bring out of that. Well, there's one other factor, if I may speak on it. When you have constant turnover, you have constant retraining, and if you consistently retrain and retrain and retrain, like we were discussing in the past, to get people to train, you have to pay overtime to other people to stay on shift while they're training, and so it's just one of these things that just continues. But if you, if you stop the people leaving, stop the attrition, and, and retain these people, then what it's gonna be, in unintended effect, you're gonna lower overtime.
It'll level out.
It's gonna, it's gonna reach a different level, on a lower level, because you're keeping people and not having to put people on overtime to cover the people going to the constant training. So it's not one you can quantify right now, but in the future, you'll probably see the fact that overtime will come down a little bit, just based on retaining employees.
One thing that concerns me is that we not repeat what we experienced with the casuals. We were relying on casuals, and that overtime was high. It was high because we couldn't get the casuals in here, because first year we attempted it, well, actually shortly thereafter, we realized that the casual, which come from about a one-hundred mile radius, they'll travel here from Ocala, Jacksonville, and all over, but they'll do it here in the holidays, because they've already got a full-time job in another county, they'll come here here on the holidays, work some additional shifts, and then you can't get them back. So we reached out in a hundred mile radius, we had casuals come in here, benefited us for just over a year, and then they faded away, and we couldn't get them to come back. So now, we, the board, and I'm thankful that you did, agreed to hire more regular full-time employees, and now we started bringing them in, Jamie showed you yesterday, where it took him six months to hire seven, and then we lost five. And when you look at these people, where they're coming from, they're coming from that hundred mile radius, and they're leaving, and then they're taking jobs in other locations within that hundred mile radius that are paying more. So my fear is, that we continue going forward, and we end up with the same problem with trying to bring new people in, that we ran into with the casuals that we used, because all of us, when I say all of us, I'm talking about all counties and all cities are trying to draw from the same labor pool that's in this hundred mile radius. And unfortunately, we are competing with each other for that labor pool.
And we have to, we have to realize that, you know, these employees with their certifications, they, they are under, dealing with patient care, they're under getting diseases, I mean, unfortunately, they stick themselves in the back of an ambulance, and that patient has something, they're at risk. They put their family at risk, because they take it home, you know, and, and they, they have a lot more risk, they, they get all the colds, everybody's sick, they call nine-one-one, well, they're in the back with them, they're gonna take that home to their family. So, I mean, that's shit, that's, that's, I didn't, that's nature of the beast, but that's, that's part of it.
The, the annual total cost of that dollar, that's a hundred, two-hundred-and-twenty-three-thousand, is that what, is that what I said?
Two thirty-two, three oh eight, yes, sir, that dollar, across the board. So if we, um...
What he's doing though is he's taking that hundred forty-four, that he was using for reach chassis.
And applying that to that, that cost.
Absolutely.
I was wondering...
So there will be no increase?
I was just looking at the terms of the ambulance, four-year term, and the cost of the increase over the same term, over a four-year period, it's almost an eight million dollar increase over the next four years that you're looking at right now, just on the ambulance side, we ain't even got to the engines yet.
An eight million dollar increase?
Over the next four years.
For what?
For what?
The annual payment's four twenty-nine.
I'm talking about, well, maybe I hit it wrong, you're looking at over the next four years, one point six million over one point, maybe that was wrong.
One point six scattered out over four years?
Four years.
Yeah.
So which would be four...
You've got two twenty-three, I'm looking at that over the next four years too, I'm trying to look at it in long-term, times four, so I was off, I hit that, I hit the times button in the wrong place.
Two twenty-three is a dollar an hour total cost?
Uh, six hundred and sixty-two thousand additional.
But it's, with it covered in, in-house?
That's...
I, I understand that, but when you, when you add that two thirty-two, and you add four percent on it a year, then, um, you're looking at...
You're still looking at, at a, a huge increase over the next four years, just on that.
Did you cover in what current source is the revenue?
Yes, uh, my concern is this, my concern is, is I've added up the forty-three thousand left over from the ambulances on the cost versus the revenue, um, per year, the twenty-five thousand, uh, remaining on the retention, and that leaves us with, with about eighty thousand dollars, roughly about eighty thousand dollars that would go into contingencies every year, if everything went...
Yeah, would go back into your general fund.
And back in the general fund, but, um, under EMS, that would be under, go back in the general fund, under, if it were fire rescue, would go into contingency, I mean, the fire department would go into contingency, right? Because we have contingency fund in fire rescue.
Yeah, fire funds cannot go anywhere but fire.
At this point.
Yeah.
My, here's, I'm gonna readdress this concern again, and my concern is, is that we have to, we have to put in a, um, a, another station up north, and that station is going to cost, whether it's out of the fire department, uh, wherever it's gonna be budgeted, we're gonna have to come up with money for that.
Right.
And I, what I see here is this, I see the future of the board saying, if we have to get this thing in, we're going to have to raise fire assessments considerably to, to do that, and I, I don't wanna back ourselves into a corner that we can't get out of, so I'm, I would be willing to negotiate this number down a little bit.
Of what?
Which number?
Which number?
The retention number down, because we can't negotiate the ambulances, you've got the ambulances within the budget like I, like we asked, where there was no money that would have to be...
Well, and I got the dollar increase within the budget with no increase.
Again, but your problem is, is we're, we're not funding future, uh, the future of growth of the, um...
Well, unfortunately, we're not...
We'll never do it, listen, you can't finance broke on the facts of your fire, it ain't gonna happen. It hasn't ever happened in any other county or any city. So don't think that you can finance your equipment and your buildings on the salaries of the, on the, on the salaries or potential salaries of firemen, it just, it's never happened, and it won't happen. The reality is, it does take more money. If you didn't have any stations today, and you were contemplating a fire assessment, your first fire assessment would be based on a plan to build a new station. So you look at your fire assessment today, the number of stations that you built, and ask yourself the simple question, can we build another fire station within the current assessment? No. Why did the assessment broke to where it is today? Because you built a fire station. So if you're gonna build another fire station, you're gonna have to do it the same way that you did the past fire station. The reason that you have a fire assessment is just a little issue of history, and somebody may be more familiar with it than others. But the truth is, fire assessments and solid waste assessments came into play in the state of Florida, because so many people pay no taxes. That's a fact. So many people pay no taxes, it's a fact in every single county. In fact, when I was for Marion County, I had all those, I had the data, I broke it out into categories, had the property ready to do it, and you could see what an enormous percentage of people pay almost nothing. I'd listen to people in public hearings say, we don't want you to increase the fire assessment, because we don't pay any taxes today. But we have to pay the fire assessment, because it isn't subject to the homestead exemption. And that's why the legislature approved it, so that local governments can provide basic, necessary services, and have them funded across the board more fairly than it was. A disproportionately higher share of your revenue is coming in from commercial businesses. A large portion of taxpayers, what we call taxpayers in this county, aren't paid them, aren't doing anything at all, okay? So the assessment is how do you build stations? And it won't be any different going forward. The question of whether or not you're going to build a station or not is, it'll come back to a decision of whether or not you're prepared to come up with the funding on your assessment. assessment to do it. Or is your only other source of general revenue?
The question is, the bit, what it boils down to is, what level of service do you want to provide? If you're happy with the current level of service, if you want to increase it to a million dollars a year, it's, it's what level of service does this board want to provide? We need to choose an amount of service, at a dollar figure to go with it, and then turn it over to them to provide it. We can argue about it, and argue about it, it's a million dollar increase this year in what we paid out last year. They can say it's covered in the budget, but that's going to be reoccurring. So decide what level of service you want to provide, and then whether or not you want to fund to provide it. That's what it boils down to. The needs will always be there, no matter what level we decide to fund it at, there'll always be more needs. For me, it's too big of an increase for this year.
I tend to agree.
Mr. Chairman, just talking about the ambulance is what I'm looking at here. I mean, it looks like this is, if nothing changes, none of your EMS billing or special vet revenue, it, it basically is paying for itself.
Yes, sir.
Is what I'm seeing here. And I would hope that the EMS billing and the special vet revenue would go up.
It will. Which will provide additional revenue for...
And I don't, I don't disagree with you there, but we haven't seen that to be reality yet. This is the first year that we've gone to that. And before we obligate ourselves to a $473,000 a year payment, I would like to see those savings as, in reality, not in hypothetical.
And this isn't the first year that you've, you've had those additional revenues, they've been rolling back into general fund, because we've been collecting more than what's been budgeted.
Talking about from, this will be our first year going into the new billing system.
A new billing system, but you're still providing the same service. So the funds are still, the funds are the funds, we're going to do better than where we're at today, but you're still, you've brought the same funds in for the last two and a half years. We, they haven't been, the 1.45 hasn't, has been listed as a, a budgeted fund, but you've brought additional revenue that have rolled into general fund.
I'm, I'm still...
Yes, ma'am.
You're not going to reach, doing the rechassis, right?
We're, we're not. With this plan, we wouldn't be. This, this plan would, has helped fund itself under the current budget and the current operational standpoint. This is to maintain status quo, this isn't to, this is to maintain the ambulance service where it's at today, and to maintain the personnel of where it's at today. No additional. When we talk additional, that's something we need to workshop, and there's lots of discussions. We're talking about maintaining, and the maintenance of it is, is paying for itself.
Well, I, I, I want to say this, Mr. Chairman, if I may. I think we are backing up, and as the chairman said, that, you know, it's whatever amount of services do we want. Do we want less? Do we want to be average? Do we want to go, because at the rate that we are going, and we're losing employees, we're backing up. When we can have employees that will stay with us, it's, it's like we, we had a stand still. I would much rather have that level of competition where we could, we could stay afloat, that you can keep employees around for a while, rather than going somewhere else. I, I, I'm going to have to support the effort.
Well, you got, you got two things there. You got, you got the raise is for the retention, but that's one separate discussion for me, aside from the ambulances of lumping. I don't want to lump them into one. I think retention issue is different than the, the lease issue.
Yeah.
And I, I'm, I'm open to the retention discussion. Where I'm held up on is the reoccurring payment of $473,000 a year.
I, Mr. Chairman, I agree with that assessment wholeheartedly. I don't want to get rid of ambulances, or, and then end up having to be pushed into a, that reoccurring lease agreement every, every single year for the rest of our existence.
I'd rather rock on the way we've gone for a couple of years, realize those savings, put them towards rechassis, and then if...
And give our guys a raise.
Yeah.
I mean, I do understand that, that we got to, we're going to save some money in overtime by just lowering retention. I, I can't come back to, in two years, three years down the road, and have to ask the member of the, the citizens of this county to, to float a large increase in their fire assessments.
This ain't got to the fire assessment part yet, it's just...
I've said, in the, because of a, a new, I think we can, I think we can do it, we can find the money then, at that point, it'd be a lot easier.
Let's just take it one at a time. I'm, on the, on the ambulances, I'd rather stick with 144,000 and continue to rechassis.
Mr. Chairman, we have a...
Mr. Chairman, I'm Carol Lee Howell. I just, I think you guys are missing the boat. You asked Jamie yesterday to find, find the money, and he's done that. And the money is in the budget, and you need to, you need to fund for the raises like you're talking, but also the ambulances, because that is so important. I mean, the idea of rechass, recasting, you can only do it three times, but we, we need better equipment. And if you haven't ever had an ambulance ride, like I've had an ambulance ride, you, this county needs to come up, come up to the, come up to the plate, you know? It's, it's time, and, and Jamie has, has, the money is in the budget, and, and this will save us in the long run. Looking forward, yeah, we have to, this is getting us ready for, for, for the future. That's, you guys seem to look, you say you're looking at one, and you'll look at the other in a couple of years, but do it now while the money is there, because birth is coming, and I believe that. I've been, I, I've seen it myself, and we need to be ready for it, and, and he's got the money in the budget, and we need to, because you don't think about it until you need an ambulance. And I can tell you firsthand experience, when I had needed an ambulance, we also needed the firemen, because we got broken into, so we, we bolted our door shut. So ambulance had, fire truck had to come to our, to our house to unbolt the door, to get to me. And it's very important.
I, I don't disagree with you that it's very important. And it, the money appears to be there this year, but it's, it, it's the reoccurring cost, and it may not be, it may not be there next year or the year after that.
Well, no, no, I, I totally disagree with you, respectfully. Because, I mean, because there, all these needs that are happening, they're going to continue to happen, and where you're getting the revenue from, where, where Jamie's getting his revenue, that is going to continue. And so, that's going to be there. And so I just, I think you're trying to be, what's the phrase? Penny...
Penny wise, pound foolish.
Penny wise, pound foolish. So I think you need to, and I don't want, I, I don't want to increase at all, but, you know, I, I'm very conservative myself, and I respect that. But when there's a need, there's a need, and it's, you don't want to have ambulance breakdown on the road when you're in it. Trust me, I, and so, and I've had, it's, it's just...
But I, I don't think under current, we're not, we don't have junk equipment. We're not, we're not driving around and beat up rundown ambulances.
We have breakdowns while responding to calls currently? That is, and that's going to continue to get worse.
What's the percentage of breakdowns to calls?
Percentage of breakdowns, probably we're having once a week on a call. So, but when is that? How many calls?
Out of how many calls?
We're running 300 calls a week, probably.
Okay, so we got one, every 300 calls, we have a breakdown?
Okay.
So here's what I've asked before, I've asked this yesterday, and to consider as well, not just the four-year plan, but also consider less what the cost difference would be for, let's say, half, three ambulances. I know we're going to eat the $90,000 for the sale of the other three ambulances, or at least part of it.
Well, that's not even figured into this now.
Not figured into it now.
So, I, I am for keeping our equipment up to date, and doing what's right for the community. I just, I have an issue with the amount of money that we're going to be paying every single year by getting six new ambulances, when I don't believe that we need six new ambulances. And if we can cut that down even by, by, even by 40 percent...
Well, I have, out of my fleet of nine, I have two that are under warranty. So we're going to assume all breakdown costs. One, I've replaced a motor at $25,000. I've replaced transmissions, airbags. I know Mr. Ernest Johns is here, they, they're the shop, they can tell you where our fleet is. You know, this is, this is a service, it's not like a dump truck, we can't park it when we don't have the staff or it's broke down. We've got to provide the service. And this is paying for itself, and allowing us to progress into the future, keep status quo where we are today, and provide a quality service. So that's, that's where we're at.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yes, sir.
John, how, how often the engines and transmissions, the problems you have, I know I've been out to public works, and I saw, saw them out there several times.
I can't figure that out. The more angry bits on these things, the more breakdowns there's going to be.
I understand.
And y'all got to remember, when they get into this thing and start it up, it's wide open until it's thawed.
Hey.
It's not like we drive our vehicles every day. That's, that's a problem, so once they go out of warranty, we pay for everything.
Thank you. Chairman, something?
Anything from this side?
I just had some further down the list on the engines and tankers I wanted to talk about.
Mr. Hancock?
Just two things. Mr. Chairman, you're concerned about recurring funds. Mr. Richardson is concerned about, is there really a need? Well, yesterday, he was over there very adamant about, do we fund a full-time person with benefits, everything, at the Coliseum? And he didn't like that, because it's going to continue into the future. He wanted it to be a part-time person. And I think the ultimate decision was to go with a part-time person. The total amount, if that employee was hired full-time, and it cost over a, say, a 20-year career, the difference you're talking about is maybe, maybe $30 a week that you would pay a full-time employee versus your part-time. I don't have my calculator, but if you were to multiply that out, you're not talking about that much money over a 20-year career. Now, I think that's being penny wise and pound foolish. The recurring funds issue, it took Danny Hale, when he started trying to get a Dowling Park Library facility built, every year, it seemed like, in the last, well, I don't know, during the discussion with Mr. Wainwright, he was always bringing up the recurring funding from the state. If we didn't have that money, what happens? Because it's not guaranteed. You know something? Life is not guaranteed either. But the funds that they are, fire rescue is currently bringing in, totally, totally, it doesn't cost the taxpayers anything to do the fund the ambulances and the raise for the retention. You would be, in my opinion, as a taxpayer, totally 100% wrong if you were to refuse this because of, well, the funds aren't recurring. What's the future going to be? The recurring funds are going to be there. They're not going to stop coming in, they're going to continue making the calls. I think you're just being up here, just talking, it sounds like. If you really want to do something, don't chip seal $436,000. Don't chip seal, do this. Chip sealed isn't going to save a life. This might. Quit being ridiculous with what you're talking about. Where are your priorities?
Mr. Hancock, let me simply say that my viewpoint of being penny wise and pound foolish is, if we doubled our, our amount that we're buying of something, and we only increased it by 25, the price by 25%, but we chose to go cut it, keep it in half, just to say 25%, that's penny wise and pound foolish. Let me clarify something. When I can, when I've got an employee or a presentation, the possibility of adding an employee to our, to our staff, and that employee may have something to do half, the other half of the time that he's there at work, he has something to do that would last him 20, 20, 20 to 30 hours a week, but it's doubling our cost, and that was exactly what it would be, it would be doubling our cost, because we cut that budget directly in half, that's not penny wise and pound foolish. That's starting off in a position where we know we need the additional staff, but we know we only have so many hours that we, that he needs to be there. If in the future, he needs to be there longer, then we can come back and look at him, make him full-time, and pay him the additional amount of money. So that's not being penny wise and pound foolish, that's not sitting up here just talking. We're talking about not just your taxpayer money, we're talking about taxpayer money from all over the county as well. And we've got to answer to our constituents as well, for how we spend that money. My concern is, just like Chairman, the chairman's, and that is, these reoccurring costs, I'm not questioning one bit that, that we are not going to have the revenue year over year as we grow, because the more people come into the county, the more needs that we're going to have, the more people age, the more needs that we're going to have for ambulances. What I have an issue with, I think that the, that we're probably overfunded right now, they're slightly overfunded right now, if they have 430, or $40,000 in EMS revenue that's available to purchase these, these ambulances, maybe we're charging people a little bit too much as it is. And so, hey, I'm looking at it, I'm just looking at the money that's available. So if that's the case, you don't have to go back and answer to the voters. I do, and we all do. And that's, that's a hard pill to swallow, when especially, we have to consider a new station in the future. That's all I'm considering. That's all, that's the only, if we can get away with replacing outdated ambulances that are problematic, a couple a year rather than six at one time, then I'm okay with that. If we can at least meet the need, this is a negotiation process anyway, that we're talking about. And I'm, look, I applaud Mr. Summers for being able to come in and bring us this, this thing without asking for any more budget, budget money, any more money for, out of, out of the budget for this. I just, we're going to have to come up with a little bit more, a little bit more reasoning that's going to make it easier for me to accept six ambulances. So that's where I'm at.
Well, Mr. Chairman, do we, you know, we're, we're going back and forth, we're talking, and actually, we're planning to say, and I, I, I made my statement that I, I just want to move forward, count me in as I'm for it, for the ambulances, and I'm just ready to move forward.
I don't doubt its need in the ambulances. I'd rather buy two a year than leave six a year. And you can just about do it with the funds you got there. I just don't want to be in that reoccurring payment on $500,000 a year coming back, because after five years, that, that's a high dollar amount, and if we're out of them... after five years, that, that's a high dollar amount, and if we're out of the ambulance business altogether, we're, we're stuck at the mercy of whatever the, the, the new lease payment will be five years from now.
Well, we say we're stuck out of the ambulance business altogether. Are we stuck out of the ambulance business?
No, no, no. I'm talking about, we don't have, with any that we own. We're, we're at the mercy of what the leases come in at that point. Right now, when we buy two a year, it's a little easier to budget.
Well, if we buy two a year, we're at, what's that, 540? If we buy two a year, we're at 540 versus...
Right. And then next year, if we hit a budget crisis, we can say, we're not going to buy two this year.
Okay.
That's what I'm getting at, is, is if, if we, I don't have a problem setting up an equipment replacement plan, but if we're stuck in that I have to make that lease payment, and next year, for some reason, we need funds somewhere else, we're stuck. Might buy one ambulance next year. And then, you follow what I'm saying? I'm, I'm not doubting that the equipment needs to be on a replacement schedule. I just don't know that I can handle, because between the two, the fire trucks and the ambulances, you're, you're looking at a million dollars reoccurring every year. And that's just hard for me to swallow.
Well, do we have to figure this right now?
No, we got till, I mean, we don't have to.
I'm, I'm trying to figure out another way to look at this, but I can't figure it out within two minutes.
That's fine.
So, I mean, I'd like to move on and just go down the road and revisit this again.
That's fine.
I'd like to run some numbers.
Do you want the whole thing, or you want to talk about the fires?
Well, the, the first part, but the second part, my question is, the annual rollover, 280,000, where'd that, where's that come from?
That's the rollover above, the, the funding is under budgeted, so that's your rollover annually.
So, we...
That's what we roll into contingency annually.
Okay. So, how, how much have we rolled into contingency?
We've got 1.125 in there.
So, we have 1.1, okay, okay.
That's your total contingency, average rollover on a year is about 280.
All right. How did I understand that? All right, keep figuring.
So, are we, I know we had three pieces, so we're going to move the ambulances. Next, next one, what about the, the retention? Where are we going, where do we want to, or are we pushing that off too?
I'm good with the retention. I don't have a problem with that either.
I think Clyde said he was fine with that. You got three American matters. What do you think?
Is everyone with the middle?
Yeah, the retention.
At least three are.
Three are.
And what is the cost of one of those trucks? We bought one outright?
Ambulance?
Retail ambulance.
270.
Yes, about 270.
What do you get if you get two of them?
540. There's no buy discount.
Even if you're on, even if you're on a, a one ambulance a year, that rotates your stock every six years. I mean, that's easier to swallow than being on a, on a six or four years for 500,000 a year, or four, 400,000 a year. And that leaves you a little bit of cushion in your budget with some returning revenues.
What's your oldest ambulance out now?
2008. So, it's going on six, what, eight years old? Pushing 200 and...
How many reach chassis is it?
It's on three on that one.
It's on three on that one.
Those are the three I was going to sell that are on, they're already maxed out.
And what's a reach chassis cost?
Reach chassis, on the small boxes, they're 150. On the large boxes, they're around 2. So, we have two different sized boxes.
You've done that three times on that third truck?
On, on, on three trucks. Actually, three, yeah.
You can reach chassis it three times.
Yeah, we're reach chassis them, so. Those, those three, I would be, those are the three I want to sell.
If you replaced and sold one at a ti, one a year?
Replaced and sold one a year.
Yeah, with one, a new purchase?
Mm-hmm.
Pulled out one of your...
I think we would need to do more than one to come out ahead if he's doing, if he's doing 150 each time we're doing one.
Yeah, but you don't have to reach chassis all of them.
How many a year?
And, and the thing, you go with reach chassis now, what, what happens is, we're, we're maxed out now with what we have. When you take a reach chassis, you have to take into the cost of, you have to schedule that around your special events and hope nothing breaks down, because if I have a reach chassis, it's gone for six months, and I'm down to eight. Now, I only have one spare. So, with this lease, it gave me a bigger cushion, because I had an additional call come up the other day. My office staff and myself go out to the ambulance on the fence. Well, we're down one, one's in the shop. There's nothing for us to pick up that extra call with. With this lease, it moved our fleet from nine to 12, gave us that bigger cushion, put the ambulances that run all the business in lease, so that way, they're reoccurring the majority of our fleet, the bulk of our fleet, and then we have those other ones for breakdowns, additional resources, additional call load that picks up, things like that. So, that's, that's where this is, if, we're not asking for any additional, we're asking to maintain what we're doing today in a, in a, in a better scenario. So, you know, one a year rolling out, the way we're sitting right now is not going to...
All right, I, I have a suggestion. I finally did the math I needed to do. All right, if, if we did, of course, I don't know that the lease payments will be the same, because it'll be less leased.
On the ambulances, there was no discount, so.
So, no discount, okay.
No discount.
All right, if you do this scenario right here, if you do two the first year, it's going to cost you, let me see, it's going to cost you 143, 271 the first year. And if you look at the revenue that you say is coming in every year, which is 473, 148, you'll end up with 329,877 extra left over the first year. The next year, you got to, you lease two more. That brings your total lease up to 286, 542 payment for the, for that year. And with the 473, 148 coming in, then those two years, you have a surplus of the revenue versus the lease of 516,483. You roll into the third year, leasing the fifth and sixth, which brings you up to 429, 814, then the difference there of what you have coming in, 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 in revenue is 43,333. But you add that to the 516, you come up to 559, 816. So, then the fourth year, when you're leasing six every year, you're still, you're 130,000 the next year over, so you still have money to put back in. So, the fifth year, well, with that, at that point, if you can, if you continue to maintain with your revenue coming like it is, which it should go up, then you should always have a cushion from that point forward. So, if you did two, two, and two, then you'll always, you'll build in a cushion, not even, not even, you know, relying on an increase in revenue if your revenue stays the same. That's the only big question mark.
The revenue's not going to decrease. The revenue's going to keep moving forward. We have a pattern of that over the last two and a half years. It's moved forward.
So, by doing that...
Right.
So, by, by doing that, you're building in a cushion. The first two years, you're building in a half a million dollar cushion, so when you go into the next year, you have enough to pay for it already, but, but you're, you know, what I'm saying is, just out of the cushion, you can pay for it.
So, you're saying, over a three-year revolving, at the end of the third year, you'd have a six ambulance lease?
Yeah, you go two, two, and two, so...
It's revolving.
In the third year, you're getting toward the end of your lease on your first two, but you start to revolve it. And that way, you've built yourself a cushion in money-wise to, to manage it without...
And that staggers it naturally.
And it staggers it out. As revenue goes up, then that goes up too. But I, that's, that's just a, you know, compromise, basically, to, to build in a cushion up front.
That's, that's what I, what I'm looking at, and what I was asking for was, and, and you answered that question, there is no discount for the six versus the two.
Right.
So, we're going to, we're going to pay the same amount?
We're going to pay the same amount today, it's...
It's going to be divided up into six.
The only, the only difference will be the manufacturer increase of whatever they do, just like any other vehicle. So, you're, yeah, they're priced at this, this year, next year, they could be 5% higher, you know, whatever the traditional market runs.
Or lower.
So, that's understandable.
Basically, we're paying $71,000 a year per, per ambulance on a lease payment. That's what 429 divided by six comes out.
That's what we talked about yesterday, was the same way we used to do the graders on the buyback.
Yeah.
And that, that's fine. If we can earmark that and put that down, so we have a progression moving forward, I'm fine with that.
I feel a lot better.
So, we'll do two this year, four next year, and six the final third year.
Two, two.
Because if we're running the problem...
Well, it totaled six on the third year.
By, by the third year, you got six, six that are probably still within warranty.
Well, we'll be...
Well, you'll have, you'll be under warranty on the third year, and then on the fourth year...
Fourth year, you switch them out.
Fourth year, you're taking the first years out, bringing two new in, and revolving it.
But then that way, as the county moves up, and hopefully, you know, taxes with things happening at the interstate, and we get, you know, more revenue in the county, and...
EMS billing revenue.
And, you know, EMS goes up and things like that, then we're building a cushion in for future growth.
And if push comes to shove, we could always hold off on leasing if, if we got into problems.
We could.
Second year.
Because we're not locking down to a lease of six every year.
I'm more comfortable, that's...
How many do you think you would keep back out of our fleet for?
I get to keep everything with that plan.
You would?
Until you get to that third year.
You couldn't sell the, the...
I can't sell nothing.
Really?
Not with the way that some of the fleet is, that we're still running as our primary units. I mean, you're, you're talking...
You get to the third year, then you can...
Then you can start letting stuff go at that third year. You've got to look at, you're not going to see a reduction in, in repair and maintenance, because it's slight, but not, not an overall reduction.
Well, see, the two, if you got the two this year, you got, you're going to replace the one that, that's ready for a reach chassis right now, so...
On six months, yes, sir.
So, that one is, is there, and then you've got a, you've got one that would replace one of those three that are sitting out there, and you said you've got two spares, so that would be replacing the bottom two of the fleet, of the ones that are in. And it sounds like to me that it's possible, that you could, if you had to, you could actually run a secondary, if, if the calls came up on the non-emergencies, you could run a secondary ambulance for that. That way, keep our guys out there on, in our cab.
And that's what we do. If, if there's nine available, I mean, there's times that I have seven calls, I have seven trucks at, on calls all at once. So, if I have anything down, it's at the shop, Ernest has it. If it's at Dodge Place, Equipment, or here locally, you know, they have those trucks. So, we first respond and do what we have to do, but, I mean, the calls are going to get covered. I understand. I'm just trying to put our fleet in a better situation than we currently are, and, you know, having the funding means to do it, so. If, you gentlemen, tell me what, what you want to do, and that's what I'm going to do.
I have one other question that's a little bit related. What would a new site cost for a new station? Just a ballpark figure, half a million?
Minus the truck.
Minus the truck?
Yeah.
If we...
What it costs to build Welverne?
380.
Their total cost of a million dollars.
Fire, yeah. Fire truck, ambulance, and no personnel.
But without the fire truck and ambulance and all that, just, just the building?
No.
It was 400.
Fire truck, ambulance, ambulance is 270, fire truck is 439, and the building, you're going to look at about 385.
$400,000.
So, what I was getting at with the savings here, we'd have a cushion the third year, basically, we almost have enough money to build a station to.
Well, and, and the, the plan was, you know, with your, with your assessment, the way it's laid out, your, just because you run EMS out of it, station, if you're idolizing that station as a fire station, and you're placing it as an ESO geographical site, you can pay for that 100% out of your assessment. You have to put no general fund revenues, you know, in that. You can pay for it out of a fire station, because you're documenting as a fire station to provide a service. Now, your personnel is a different matter, and your ambulance is a different matter.
It's a fire station that's going to house an ambulance, is what it basically book.
That's correct. So, you can pay for it out of your assessment, not out of your general fund. You know, the overall goal's going forward is, we, we built the Lurville station, we paid for it out of general fund, and the fire assessment makes payments back to the general fund for that building. Well, instead of using our funds that are sitting in contingency to build the entire site, lease the site out with equipment, fire truck, and ambulance, make the payment over the year, because you're not going to close it, you're going to make the payments. The revenues are coming in. Instead of putting that million dollars up out front, you can pay your annual payment over whatever your term that you want to place on it, and it will keep the cost down.
What's left to pay on that, do you know?
We're paying 17,000 a year up until 2023, 2025?
76, 665.
How much?
176.
665. I know we had talked about that before, whether we were going to write it off, or whatever we were going to do.
But it's paid for.
The payments are like 18 dollars.
But it's paid, it's paid for.
The board paid for it. It's paid for. We don't owe no one else for it. The board owes.
The fire owes you back the money.
Yeah. We pay you annual payments of 17,000 a year.
Oh.
Yeah, that should have been paid, built in McAlpin, technically, instead of where it's at.
Well, I'm fine where it's at.
I know. Well, we staff it. We do whatever you want to do. I'll put a fire truck and ambulance, and we'll staff it. You just got to write the check.
Just because it's still funding it, so.
Your third year.
The payback to us, the same way with the col, we did, we undid the Coliseum a couple of years ago with the TDC funds.
Right.
I just, I don't see the purpose in it. It's, it's paid for. We can't do it now, but I mean...
But then will we reduce your general revenue by now?
Um, and you also, and you can bring this up, is if you want to consolidate the volunteer budget into the paid service and get rid of one budget, you're not getting rid of the budget. The funds are being paid, it's being allocated. The assessment is still the assessment. You can get rid of one budget line, having to review, service is not changing any. So, that's, I know that's been brought up yesterday, I think.
Both of those in one board meeting, just go ahead and discuss.
So, I know that discussion had come up multiple times. Um, so...
Hang on just for a second, Mr. Chairman, before you, before we call for a decision on this particular issue.
Uh-huh.
Can I step out?
We're going to have a problem here in a minute. Yeah. Take a break about that.
I have that right. You made me stand. You going to make them stand?
All right.
Why I say I don't have an issue with the taxpayer. My family live out. That person won't make big dykes in the country.
I'm not a snicker person. I'm not the snicker.
Snickers really satisfies. Right now, my stomach is satisfied.
There's Snickers in here.
Thank you.
Here, make a Snickers for Milky Way. Oh. Okay, we'll put his Milky Ways in there.
Well, I wanted them to know they were in there.
Well, go ahead, put them in. We'll put those in, and then put that on top. Put those on.
Thank you.
All right. Okay.
Where do we leave off?
All right, so we've talked about the retention, we've talked about the ambulances. So, progressive to this year, and see where we're at for the next two years.
Is that what, did you have three?
We've okayed retention, and we, we still are...
Y'all said okay on retention?
Yes, we got the three on retention, right?
On the progressive plan?
Are you okay with the Larry plan?
The Larry plan.
I'm good with the Larry plan.
Larry plan?
Looks like you got three on the Larry plan.
Larry plan.
Can we put it on the line item as that Larry plan?
Put it, my budget is Larry plan and EMS, right there at the bottom. Okay. So, the other option on here was for fire engines and tankers, showed you, defined the revenue where we have, your annual rollover, which roughly is about 280. Instead of a five and a seven, if we roll everything to a 10-year lease, so it brings our cost down, and unfortunately, they are working numbers right now, but if we get that number down to that rollover number, where we leave our contingency pocket alone, and we're just working right around that rollover number, I think, from the way it it sounds, is y'all sweet spot, maybe?
What kind of a warranty is on?
There, there will only be a five-year, we, we discussed heartily last night that with the, the mileage and everything, we're going to be putting on them, um, you're not going to see drastic maintenance till after ten, so he said he would not go any longer than ten, and it's kind of stretching of where they would want to be, but, um, we can do ten, you got full coverage for the first five years.
Do we have an estimated maintenance cost during those last five years?
No, I don't, you're, you're going to see, probably at that time, I mean, your tires, you're always going to assume, um, the unknowns are the pumps and things like that, but with our maintenance plan and the, the age of these as they're coming in, they're not used when we're buying them, so we have a better, uh, chance of them lasting the time. The engines that we're getting in now are over ten years, those are the ones that we're putting the high maintenance money into, are after ten, so I, I feel comfortable with the fleet if we, if we set it around the ten-year, excuse me, the ten-year mark. I will come back with those figures as soon as possible, but, uh, that's kind of the, the thought process, was be about the ten-year mark on the lease, that does have a buyback at the end of ten years, and, um, it, it will cover it out of the, the rollover without hitting the contingency as hard as we were looking at.
Both the tankers and the engines?
Tankers and the engines, yes, sir. Does that get your fleet where it's at, we can get rid of, we can come down from fifty-three to around thirty-ish, so that covers, that gets a reduction in liability insurance, it gets a reduction in, um, repair and maintenance, downtime, all that stuff, like we were looking at, we're just cutting our payment down.
And that would increase our backup, uh, we would have a, we would have a little bit more as far as reserve, uh, engines or tankers, we've got a couple, we'll have a couple of extra.
Yes, sir, yeah, we will have a couple of extra, so.
We'll not be increasing our fleet?
No, we're not increasing our fleet, because we're going to surplus, a lot of the, the old tankers and everything we have, we're going to surplus, it's going to put us better for engines-wise, where we're, we're needed, and if we do add that station, um, we're not desperate to go out and buy an engine right up front, we will have something to put in there to get started, and that will allow us to, you know, cut that upfront cost down, and then we can look at an engine down the road, so.
Well, until we know those numbers.
Understand, I'll just kind of tell you my, where I'm, where I'm going with it. Any other questions?
If, if they come back, if we need to, we can workshop it at the next board meeting if you have it by then.
I will have it by next board, I'll have it this afternoon, if we're coming back this afternoon, and I have the numbers, I'll, I'll get them.
We're working through lunch, hoping we ain't got to.
Sir?
I said, we're working through lunch, hoping we ain't got to come.
That's fine.
We can wrap it up.
As soon as I get them, I'll have them to you. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
My affairs?
I'm, I'm just going to make a couple of brief comments, uh, one, I think, process this year is going very well, a couple of lines that's taken in the brief, uh, one thing I want to mention to you is, we have, we have, uh, a lot of, uh, a lot of, uh, a lot of things go through the minds of commissioners at this stage of the game, uh, I've been there before, I know what you're experiencing, some of you haven't had to experience it yet, uh, but it's, it's a time where you start thinking, okay, what are we going to do with this difference? Are we going to drop the millet rate? Are we going to try to run some things that are on our radar? I don't have a, a recommendation for you, okay? And I'm going to emphasize that, I am not making a recommendation, but I'm going to make some comments, only because I've been there before, and only because of this, y'all may with some of the things that I'm about to say, because we talk about them in, uh, regular county commissioner meetings, but, uh, a couple of things that are big ticket items, that are coming out next year, uh, a year after, are going to be the climate controls, the heritage, uh, deciding how we're going to finish out Mizel building, we've got a need for climate controlled, uh, storage for all of your administration grants and everything going forward, we're going to have to have a building, we can put a building out there, where we are today, on that property, uh, there's climate control, where that stuff readily accessible to those of us that have to have it, go back from our research team, not only road department, old grants and information, but administration grants, or those that have been obtained through administration as well, there isn't just administration, it's your other constitutional offices, uh, it's the tax collector, not so much the property advisor right now, but the tax collector and others, supervisor elections is going to have to have, uh, climate control and storage for equipment, today, we are utilizing upstairs of the old administration building, climate control storage, period, that's all that's going on up there, because it was the only place that we had to do things to, we tore down the Nettie Basin facility. In the current budget, this year, we created a line, uh, I put a hundred thousand dollars in there from your, uh, capital, uh, your reserve of capital outlay, um, that was because we began running out of the cap improvement plan loan, because we took out, because it took nearly all of that to build the state attorney's office and the other improvements that were necessary to accommodate that. So, in the current year, we tapped into, we created a line for Mizel building, uh, improvements, which we're not finished with, in this proposed budget, we put another half hundred thousand dollars in there for going forward. What I want you to consider, though, is that we're not finished, once we get that building in shape, we're going to obviously have to replace the roofing materials on that, do lots of other things. So, what I would submit to you, is that when it get, you get to this point in your budget workshops, that you believe in that you've satisfied all of the needs that has been presented to you, if you look at the difference between, um, what you're proposing, or where you are with your contingency, uh, today, and where we were in the current year, current year, we're at, I think we ended up at two hundred and thirty thousand dollars, I believe, in contingency, so you've got quite a spread there, so, are you going to just drop the millet rate down to match that in the next year? Or in the alternative, you want to consider setting some money aside for that big improvement that's coming, um, it's going to be in the neighborhood of another two hundred thousand, could be two hundred and fifty thousand, satisfy all this need for climate control, and take care of the needs that we have today, and then free up what you have in that upstairs building, use the office space, because I know now you're going to be leasing office space elsewhere for, uh, economic development, et cetera, and you own a building, except it's full of storage. That's one option that you have, is to consider setting some money aside for that, what you don't want to do is continue to draw down your, uh, that line for reserve capital outlay. You're going to need that going forward, for other needs that are going to be in your capital improvement plan that I'm going to be bringing back to you, I'm just picking the big one out right now, I'm telling you, you're going to need these two hundred, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. In addition to that, we've now stepped over that threshold, and said we're going to start handling some chip seal projects going forward, you funded that so far in this year, so far as what's been approved by the board, uh, next year, if you come back with another four hundred thousand dollar expense, or five hundred thousand dollar expense, um, you have an opportunity for where you are today, to maybe set two hundred thousand aside, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars aside, if you did both of those things, you still have another four hundred thousand dollars plus, that you could, uh, that's left, for you to consider setting your contingency back at two thirty, or two fifty, or two hundred, and have room there to still lower your millet rate a little bit from where you are right now, at the night. So I just offer those as, uh, options for y'all to discuss if you want to, if you go forward, I know as a previous county commissioner, commissioners hate spikes in budgets, you don't want to have large ups and large drops, because if you drop, and then the next year you have to come back up to try to accommodate some of the needs that are on your list, it makes it look like you're raising tax, if you can hit that even point, you're always better off, that was always my opinion, my philosophy, and those are the ones with. But you've got an opportunity in here now, with some of this margin, to try to address some of those things, and escrow them, as though you're planning for them coming forward next year, some portion of them, so that you're not trying to do all of it next year. So I leave you with all of that information, that's all it is, it isn't a recommendation, it's just a lot of information that you might want to consider going forward.
Two things.
Yes, sir.
First question. How far out is that need for the climate controlled immediate, or year two?
Immediate.
If we look at Florida statute.
Immediate, I can answer that.
We actually have an obligation to do this, they have certain criteria for doing this, no one has pressed us, the need is immediate, um, and it's not immediate because we have the upstairs of that building, it's immediate, because we aren't meeting the statutory requirements for type of storage, the way that it's supposed to be done, but we have not been pressed by
All right, number two, what would it take to build a new jail?
Holy lord.
Fourteen million dollars.
Well, let me just say this.
And you'll see where I'm headed with that. With a twenty percent increase in beds?
Yeah, if, if what you're thinking is, that that'd be a great facility for storage, long-term, I would agree with you, because the way it's built, I went through this whole storage thing, the statutory requirements once before, I've experienced that, and it would be ideal for that, um, an ideal place for a jail that's not downtown, where you're mostly.
Exactly, that's why I'm asking the question.
This is actually in a rural area, uh, where you can build single-story facilities, with better roof systems on them, I can't tell you right now what it costs to be, but I can come up with some numbers on that, uh, personally, I think we should be escrowing for that long-term.
I do, too.
And I've been through that, I've experienced all of that.
Well, my, my thought, my thought is, if we're going to escrow out, you know, instead of just building a building just for storage, do something better for the county in the future, and build another jail, which is, because we're packed out right now, we got all we can handle, put twenty percent more beds in, or whatever, and then transition that to storage, because it's right where all the offices are anyway, and that way, you, you're not building another building just for storage purposes somewhere else, where people got to travel back and forth, that place is central to everybody, and then we, we need a new jail anyway, we don't need a downtown, so that, that's just my thought, that we could start a fund in the future if we didn't need storage immediately, and think about doing a new jail.
Yeah, that'll be in the next capital improvement plan, when I spoke to, uh, Sheriff Cameron about it, I was looking at a seven-year window, at that time, he said we're okay right now, but at some point, you're going to have to start thinking about it, so it should be in our capital improvement plan, we should be escrowing for it, definitely coming, um, but the way that facility is constructed, the jail, uh, the weakest point on it is the roof, they should have never built it that way, but it's, it is what it is, um, if we can maintain the roof forever, then that's an excellent facility for storing storage forever, long-term.
The, um, the, the, the airport lawsuit we had, we use what, portion of the half cent to fund that? Was that? Plaided. How, how long was that over, was that a ten-year? What, what was that?
Twenty-four, twenty. I thought it was four.
Twenty-two, twenty-four, doesn't it?
The what?
Ten years, wasn't it? I think it was ten, so it's twenty-twenty-three?
I thought twenty-two-four, but yeah.
I was just looking at when that would be paid off as a, a, a source of pledging for that at that point, and, because we ain't going to never escrow that much money, though, for building a jail outright.
No, I don't disagree with you, I think that you have to escrow it, because it isn't just a jail, I mean, in the next fifteen years, it's going to be other facilities.
Oh, yeah, 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 I was just wondering, I couldn't remember what the terms are on it, y'all don't have to, that's fine, I was just curious, I thought.
Okay. And what, we're about three years into it?
Our stadium, yeah. I know a lot of people are not going to want it, but eventually it's going to have to. I know.
I know we had spoke about the, uh, the, the bridge and the creek remediation, did, was that in here?
I didn't put any money in here for that bridge at all.
Not, not, not the hundred?
Not one sixty-four.
No, no, the Peacock Lake one, where you had the.
I do have money in here for that.
The two fifty?
I put the two fifty, it's, uh, it's a little roof, or, I don't know, wait a minute, I think I put that.
I know you showed me some backup on it, but I.
Is that Peacock Lake?
Yeah, I, I rode that the other day, Randy, and I just don't, I can't see the repairs needed, I'm, I don't know if I'm missing something out there, or what?
Yeah, yeah, it is pretty severe.
It was at the bottom there.
What we did is we put two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in there, and, uh, I'm going to work on a different approach to that, and I can work out some more details, and I hope that it can be served at that.
I get it, but I mean, moving forward, we got to, we got to figure out some way to, eliminate or reduce our obligation to that ditch moving forward, after we do some repairs on it, and we can't keep, we can't keep going back. Yeah, because I don't want us to go put two fifty in it this year, and get a good rain, and, oh, you got to do it again, uh, this.
I don't want to be their item, so, uh, in fact, we're talking about this the other day, uh, my plan is to go have some conversation, and try to work this out with the party, and, and address our liability as well, we still have a, we still have a, a liability issue, because the way that, when the road was approved here today, we won't have to go more down with that pipe at this time, I want to come up with a plan to eliminate some of that, and get us out of this business of long-term issues for that ditch.
I'd rather put the money towards moving the pipe on down to our property there, and,
Just shoot it down there.
Do away with the, the liability that we have there.
Yeah, yeah, our property is probably closer to where that stream is actually coming from farther up, but then the pipe, we would have to extend on, you know, parallel with the street, until we get down to where we turn back in, where we own property, so those are things I'll be looking at, because I have the conversation with them out there.
Is there anything else anyone's got, anything we're missing?
One thing, Mr. Chairman, this, this is unrelated, um, you know, we, I think, quarterback club want to use that portion of the property back there, and I told them that we'll do it for exchange for the membership.
Yes, sir.
I think we got, do we have a Kirk picture? Maybe Mandy, I think Mandy.
Yeah, she's got one.
Okay.
Yes. And they agreed with that?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Couple, couple of things I wanted to mention to you is, over the years, I've been doing this for longer than, maybe.
Your oldest one in the room, go ahead.
But, um, it's nice to see y'all taking initiative to, to go ahead and fund equipment and needs that the county's got, um, across the board, um, so many times in the past, we've had nothing to work with, and it's nice for them to, to do the work. The, I did mention yesterday about retention of other employees also, um, that's something that we really need to address at some point, trying to find folks that really want to work and understand what work is, is getting more and more difficult, um, we've lost some folks, um, and, um, it's really set us back some, um, well, this may be opening a can of worms, may not be the right place to say it, but I'd like, what I'd like to do is take, um, the, the savings that we'll have in overtime because of the hire at, um, the Coliseum, the part-time there, and, and be able to bump a couple, lower in employees up a little bit, so I could, um, maybe retain those, because if I was to lose a couple of them that I'm thinking about, I'd be way behind.
Were these, were these the casuals that we were talking about, or is this?
Well, it's a, actually, full-time people that I've got now, I'd like to just do a little bit with that, the casual, the casual job that we've got will lessen the overtime that my other guys are getting now, for coming back at night, opening, closing, I'd like to. I'd like to take that savings and put it to some of those folks that are on the lower end of the tonneau pole.
If you want.
Well, it'll, it'll wind up being some savings in overtime, just regular overtime from a part, part budget.
You're not talking about that position at half.
No, no.
I'll tell you what, just put some numbers together. Because I'm pretty sure Jamie's going to have his stuff on fire ready for the next board meeting. And we'll just have a workshop in the middle of the board meeting. And we'll just look at the numbers then. But I don't think that'll be a problem. But I'd just rather see it on paper before anything.
Okay. Thank you.
And that goes to anybody else. If there's anything we missed, since we're going to be hearing that, we'll go ahead and work on anything at the next board meeting if that suits y'all.
I understand that you're going to discuss your, you won't need your budget books. Because y'all worked every year at Woodbridge and Tannenbaum. Because we were going to type your books today and I'll have them in the next couple of weeks and come back to you. Okay, any comments and any questions?
No, I don't think I'll need the book. Just, we'll need the contingency total and. Yeah, yeah.
I would tell you, this has probably been one of the easier budget years for us. I also appreciate every one of the, of your directors and Randy and each of y'all working with our staff on that. It's been a lot easier. Our staff has put a lot of work into it this year, but I do appreciate the cooperation that everyone has given.
Yeah, and I would tell you the format, the way everything was done this year, I liked it a lot better.
I just want to say thank you for, it's a privilege to work with y'all. And I apologize, you know, sometimes I get, I'm passionate about what I do. And, you know, I come from this community, so it's, it's, it's hard to provide the service that we do day in and day out. So, you know, it's a benefit to have, to be able to work and negotiate what we need to get, what we need to get done. So I do appreciate it. Appreciate the finance staff, Mr. Harris. I know I lean on Greg a lot, so he's a valuable asset to the county as a whole. There was Ms. Nina as far as running her numbers. And she's been here a long time, and she knows where everything's been and where it's come from. So, but we have a good staff, and we have a lot of valuable employees. So we appreciate it.
I've got one more thing. There's places that y'all already see are, are, are Ken and Lynn. It's where I have staff back at finance. It's where lots of times y'all don't see them. I inspiration with some of the other people there, but I really appreciate.
Oh, yeah. Anytime you got a central point and a deadline, it makes everything go a lot better. Anything from the board?
I'd just say thank you guys for putting up with the, with the new guys. I mean, Don's easy to deal with. He doesn't say a lot. Me, on the other hand, I'm going to ask a lot of questions.
He's easy to deal with. So he knows he's not easy to deal with.
Yeah. He and I figured that out at one of the meetings you guys sent us to where they divided us up by our personalities.
Oh, yeah. Separate, yeah. I ask all, I ask all the questions so that he doesn't have to. I'm sorry?
Well, Mr. Fleming, you got anything?
I don't try not to say too much, but I really think this budget workshop had, this is my seventh, I think. And this has been, nothing against the other, other, but it has been a smooth transition. It has worked well. And I say with everybody in the building, and I want to go back to last week when we was in Washington, D.C. These guys have, we have grown too. And we all men, we love each other. And I compliment the chairman and Dr. Jackson's absence and Commissioner Sessions and Commissioner Richardson and myself. We created, I feel like we created a bond. And now this is a forever relationship that I enjoy being around a group of men. Where we work together as men, you know, we may disagree. But at the end of the day, we're getting the same thing done. I shared with Commissioner Richardson just a while ago about an issue. I say, if you've got an automobile, you put one tire on this month, you put one on next year, and you put one on next year, and you're going around and around in circles. So if we do it how we do things and we do accordingly, but we have to work together in order to get it accomplished. Because sometime when we're all in the building, sometime people like to see chaos. And when there's chaos, then it's a controlling thing. You can be controlled. But if you work together, you can get whatever you want accomplished. Thank you.
I just want to say I've enjoyed this. Maybe I didn't ask as many questions as Mr. Richardson did, but I think I wore out Mr. Baker and Ken and Mr. Harris leading up to this and asking questions and trying to get a grasp of this budget here. But I do appreciate each and every one of the department heads and everyone that's here. I appreciate every one of you guys here that. I just feel like we all have the same interests. And that's what's best for our county and best for the people of this county. And I'm just privileged to be here and be part of it.
I'd just like to see the format, follow the tabs in the book. Or vice versa. I know. I'm just kidding.
Yes, sir.
I just want to thank the commission. I know I've got a small department. My budget is small compared to a lot of these budgets here. But I thank you for taking an interest in the needs that are there to you. Because maintenance is important and so is the school. If we don't have any, we don't provide them with schools like these.
Let me switch back.
It's going to fall apart. And I just want to thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry. And I want to thank all these department heads also.
Yeah, definitely. There were, things were changed up a little bit this year as far as going through Mr. Harris, the format. And we asked some of the things be budgeted at the front of the budget, such as raises. And I was very pleased with how everything worked. One of the reasons we decided to do the raises up front, knowing they're there, we can always take them out if needed. But years passed. It seemed like we always took care of our employees last instead of first. And this year, it went in. The raises weren't an issue, and we still had a pretty healthy contingency. Wanted to thank everybody for working on that and making that a success. Other than that, no one else has anything. Workshop adjourned.